Progress.
Good evening, everyone. Today is January 18th, 2022. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Cupertino City Council. Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct the roll call?
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Wei?
Here.
Councilmember Willie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Yeah.
Mayor Paul?
Here. Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. Our first item on our agenda today is a proclamation recognizing the Cupertino Library Foundation for all of its wonderful efforts. Do we have anybody from the Library Foundation here today to accept the proclamation? And I see that we have Van Danapathik for item number two. So Van Danapathik, go ahead and cut your video, and then for the very first item, we'll go ahead and present the proclamation to the Cupertino Library Foundation. So Van Danapathik, just turn off your video for now, and then we will go ahead and provide that. Let me see if there are any participants here from the Library Foundation, and I see Jim Davis is here, so I'll go ahead and promote him to a panelist. And I think Jim might be the only person I see from the Library Foundation that's here. So Jim, welcome, and I guess you're our representative from the Library Foundation today.
Okay.
So, yeah, we wanted to thank you for all of your wonderful work through the pandemic, as well as in support of the library programs, as well as the very exciting library expansion room space that we're about to unveil in the earlier part of this year. So thanks for all the work that you and your colleagues on the Library Foundation Board do. It's been, you know, great working with you, and if you wanted to say a few words, please feel free.
Okay, well, I'm sorry Karen couldn't be here. Karen is the president of the CLF, and she was planning to attend. We certainly appreciate the recognition. We love the fact that we get tremendous amount of support from not only all of the people within the community, but the city council as well. So thank you very much for that. We too are looking forward to the grand opening of the new programming space in the library, and we look forward to our continued contributions to the community and through the library helping. Thank you.
Absolutely. And Jim, if you can keep your camera on, and I will go ahead and ask our video crew to turn on the proclamation tile. And so let me count here. So if we can have just council and Jim have their cameras on, so our city manager, city attorney, Madam City Clerk, if you could, actually, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six. Yeah, okay, great. So let's go ahead and, yeah, thank you very much, and we'll go ahead and, you know, hold still pose, vice mayor hand off the chin, and, you know, we'll just be able to have the screenshot available for people that want to take this in the future for, you know, the recognition of the proclamation. All right, great. Well, Jim, thank you very much for being with us this evening, and please thank your cohorts on the Library Foundation Board as well.
I will do so. Thank you very much, all of you.
Excellent. All right, so our second item is a proclamation to an organization called Hindu Swayam Sevak Sangh, which is a nonprofit organization hosting an event known as Health for Humanity, a yoga-thon. And so we do have a member of the public, I believe Van Danapathik. And so, welcome. Thank you to your organization and for yourself for reaching out and asking for this recognition so that we could recognize that part of the community that partakes of this. And of course, it's an extremely helpful activity, so we're very happy to provide that recognition. And so, Van Danapathik, would you like to say a few words with regard to this event and your organization?
Thank you so much. Yes, definitely. Is there a presentation that we shared? You could share?
If you can present it within a couple of minutes, that'd be great.
Yeah, are you going to share it, or do you want me to share it?
I don't have your presentation, but I believe our city clerk does.
Okay, okay. Yes, I'm here to represent Hindu Swayam Sevak Sangh, and this is a nonprofit organization. We conduct Health for Humanity Yoga-Thon from January 15th to 30th. This program started in 2006, and it targeted to create awareness about benefits of the yoga. The participation across 40 states, thousands of people join performing millions of sun salutations every year.
And Van Danapathik, I'm sorry to interrupt, I just want to make sure that you keep within the couple, two, three minute time limit on this.
Sure, sure, I will do that.
I'm just making sure that, you know.
Definitely, I will do that.
Thanks so much.
So, yes, we take the sun salutation to schools, colleges, libraries, parks, everywhere. And if you can go to the next slide, yes, it's a set of 10 simple body postures, which we do it with breathing, provides complete body workout. So the benefits of the Surana Mashka is a lot of blood flow, increased blood flow, increased body flexibility, helps in better sleep, tones the digestive system, increases concentration, reduces stress, improves memory, enhances mind-body coordination. And there are many, many variations of the sun salutations. This sun salutation for perfectly healthy people, as well as people with some kind of ailments, back pain, heart, or even for people who cannot actually be on the floor, there's a chair Surana Mashka, sun salutation. For this effort, we have been recognized by the city. Thank you for the city for recognizing us, and we have been recognized for this effort from San Jose, Cupertino, Milpitas, Fremont, Tracy, and many other cities. And apart from this, we have also been doing the Seva Diwali food drive, for which, for Bay Area 2021 itself, we have collected 32,500 pounds of food, and the city has recognized us for that. Thank you so much. And these are the one freshery organizations that we have been providing food to. And so, all in all, Hindu Swayam Sevak Sangh, our goal is to promote dharma and foster peace. Thank you so much for recognizing us and giving us the opportunity to talk. Thank you.
Absolutely. And thank you for holding this. It's a very healthy activity. And Karen, I see that your camera is on. You're a little bit late for item number two. So let's go ahead. Karen, if you could cut your camera, we're going to go ask video to go ahead and turn on the first item, although I'm sorry, the second item, the Health for Humanity Yoga-Thon. And so, thank you very much for keeping your camera on. And Councilmember Willie, if you could look straight on, and we'll go ahead and take that shot with the Health for Humanity Yoga-Thon. Thank you very much for all of your great work in the community.
Thank you so much.
All right, thanks so much. And so, I'm going to go ahead and ask for everyone's, you know, very quick, good, quick shot and video, if you can put on the item number one again. Karen, the president of Library Foundation was here just a couple of minutes late. It's like, Karen, I want to give you that opportunity to go ahead and turn your camera back on, because I know that you wanted to be able to take that quick screenshot. And, great, wonderful. Well, congratulations again, and thanks for, you know, coming in and being recognized for all the great work that Library Foundation does.
Thank you. Am I allowed to say anything?
Well, very briefly, since we're a bit out of order, but if you wanted to say something.
Sorry, I was having some technical issues with the leg. Sorry about that. Thank you. Well, thank you very much, Honorable Mayor Darcy Paul, city council members, and also city staff present for the recognition of Cupertino Library Foundation. We also, of course, it's a team effort, so I want to thank our board of directors, our wonderful Cupertino librarian Claire Varese, and the collaboration we've had with the city staff. I want to just call out a thank you to Dan Thompson and the staff there for all the work we've done together. And just like a quick, we have the library expansion project coming up to completion, hopefully really soon. We are all very excited. Thank you to all the donors. Fundraising drive is also still open.
Okay, Karen, I'm sorry, I'm going to cut you off there.
Okay, okay, that's fine. Thank you all. Thank you for the recognition. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely. Appreciate that. Thank you so much. Okay, so now we have our postponements and orders of the day. Madam City Clerk, did we have any items that we're postponing, or any orders of the day that we wanted to change?
No postponements or orders of the day, Mayor.
Okay, and so I'll go ahead and check in with council and the city manager as well. I take it that there are no requests for rearranging the order or any postponements from council as well? Okay, I don't see any hands raised, and I see heads shaking, so I'll go ahead and move us to the next item on our agenda, that is oral communications. Oral communications is the part of the agenda where members of the public can speak on any item that is not on the agenda. And so I'll go ahead and reiterate, as I do with all of these items, please have your hand raised by the time the first speaker gets done speaking. And so if your hand is raised by the time that Shawnee Kleinhouse, who is our first speaker tonight in oral communications, is done speaking, you'll be called on for oral communications. And that is true for all of the items, including this item. You'll have up to three minutes to speak. If you're here to speak on an item that is on the agenda, then this is not the time to speak on it. And so I will go ahead and ask Shawnee to unmute. Welcome Shawnee, you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Paul and councilmember members. This is Shawnee Kleinhouse from Santa Clara Valley Odebon Society. Our offices are at McClellan Park. We've been there for a long time and have communicated with you all many, many times before. And I'm here tonight with a concern. I understand that the city considers moving Mr. Keith Wondry away from McClellan Ranch to the senior center, while I understand that there's staff shortages and some interest in rotating employees, so they'll have training in different types of work. Keith's unique understanding of nature, the seasonal changes, where the hawks are, when the owl falls out of the tree, his ability to monitor and steward nature is unparalleled, and it's critical to the stewardship of the gem of Sunnyvale, which is McClellan Ranch. Cities don't ask arborists to be librarian, they don't ask a librarian to do public works, they don't ask public workpeople to do childcare. Rotation in places that nature, in its continuous evolution and its continuous intricacies, it's really important to have consistency and have somebody who really understands it, knows it, and have background. And you can't train for that quickly. This is something that needs a lot of love and a lot of ability to educate people, which Keith has, and it needs continuity more than anything, long-term continuity. So I think Keith is an asset to the community. I think most third graders in Sunnyvale that have been through his classes will attest to that and their teachers. And I ask you to, I don't know if it needs a change of policy, or whatever you need to do, but keep Keith in McClellan Ranch, because he is essential for that place to function and thrive and continue to provide Cupertino residents and all the children of third grades and others with these resources, and the way that he does it is unparalleled. There is no one else like that in any of the cities we work with. And it's so important. So please, please, please do something, and don't have him moved to some other job somewhere else. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Shawnee. Our next speaker is Kendra Rosenberg, and Kendra is followed by Hemant Butch, followed by Lisa Warren. Welcome, Kendra.
Hi, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you. Welcome.
Hi, thank you very much for your time. I'm actually writing, speaking tonight on behalf of my clients who live in Cupertino. We are trying to redesign their house and get them an ADU. We've run into a somewhat unique situation because of how Cupertino has defined crawl spaces versus basements. Now, currently, you can revitalize a basement to become an ADU, but you cannot, in certain zones, revitalize an existing crawl space. Typically, a crawl space we think of as 24 to 48 inches tall. Their crawl space, legally permitted, legally built several years, like several decades ago actually, is over 10 feet tall in height and fully usable for a space like an ADU. Now, we've been rejected by the planning department because it is technically not a basement. So the consideration we have tonight is that the council reviews the wording on where they allow ADUs to be built and how they allow these spaces that already exist to be utilized. And on that note, just to give you guys a little bit of a list here that might be helpful to understand this better, with the passage of the ADUs that started in 2020, we've seen a huge increase of ADUs being built. They're now allowed to be in everyone's backyards and everyone's side yards. They're encroaching on neighbors. There's a lot of impact. With SB 9 passing, I think we're really only going to see more of this to come. By allowing some of these existing spaces, such as these overly tall crawl spaces to be utilized, we can prevent our areas from getting overdeveloped, right? We can utilize the existing structure. We would be completely within the existing volume of the house, only adding windows to this existing crawl space. So this list here would be, there would be less site coverage in developed areas, allowing more natural repercussion of groundwater. There'd be less need to remove existing trees to make way for new structures, such as these ADUs. There would be less long-term disruption to neighbors as new ADUs can be as close as four feet to the property line. The alternative here utilizing existing crawl space would mean less disruption, long-term, short-term, including during construction. The energy efficiency of the dwelling would be significantly improved as a direct result of being within the existing structure. Power, water, and utilities are often readily available. The cost for the clients would be significantly reduced, decreased time and neighborhood impact of construction. And structurally, it's more sound to add weight to the bottom of a structure, like a crawl space, versus an alternative which actually is allowed right now, such as an attic. So we thank you for your time and consideration. We ask that this just be reviewed amongst yourselves, and any possible routes to get this approved would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Kendra. Our next speaker is Hemant Butch. Welcome, Hemant.
Okay, Happy New Year, all of you. I know, Darcy, you said if you are talking on an agenda item, then this is not the time, but the last time it happened that we didn't get a chance to talk during the agenda item. So are you sure we'll get a chance to talk, or should I say now?
No, you should not talk now about an agenda item. And so we'll go to that when we get to the item.
Okay, then at least, please make sure there's some room for us to express our opinion that time.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, our, yes.
Hi, I just wanted to let you know that Mr. Douglas Passos had actually contacted me to speak under oral communications. I see he signed on here tonight, but I don't see that he raised his hand, but he did submit several items to speak on.
Okay, that's fine. So I did see that Lisa Warren also had her hand up, but has now lowered it. And so I will go ahead and ask Douglas, if you have an item to speak on that is not on our agenda, this would be the time to do it. And so I'll push the button allowing you to talk. I think you'll need to follow the prompt on your Zoom app in order to be heard, if you would like to talk at this point.
Yes.
Okay, well.
Hi, hi, and hi, Kristen. So I've sent, excuse me, did I get your name right? Yeah, okay, Kirsten, sorry. Did you, can we play some of the videos, or should I?
Yes.
So this guy here, the next door neighbor, been parking there for like a year and a half. I told, I emailed, if it had been us, or, you know, most people, they would have been towed, but he's been doing it on and off for a year and a half. I have, there's some other video, and I even got Jeff Tribas, and they said, and even the police, and the police said, oh, you got to catch him. So then he stopped doing it as much, but he's been doing this since he moved in. Let's see, was it about a year, about a year and a year ago? No, September 2020, or whatever. No, yeah, like that, right, September 2020. And, yeah, like these. But he thinks he owns it, and sometimes he used to stay overnight there. And this is a main fire. I had Manny was out here, and I said, don't you think that's a, should be, Jeff Tribas or something should do something about that? And he goes, yeah, they have jurisdiction there. I mean, I shouldn't be saying that. I hope he's not online, but I mean, this, it's just, that's a, there's a park behind there, and a children's playground, and then, anyway, that's one of the items.
Are you seeing the videos?
Next item, yeah. Go ahead.
Are you seeing the videos?
Yeah, there at the corner of his unit, and it was a round globe frosted, where it doesn't emit much light. Now it shines way into her backyard, in her windows, her living, in the living room, and her bedroom's upstairs, right above that, and it shines into her. So it's a, not only that, it's a, it's not, in the CCNRs, it says not to, you know, change the fixtures. So, those are just a couple of items that I brought up, but they, I think quite a few things. Different items than just this. You see the light there? You can see it almost down to the pool, which is about, I don't know, 200, 300 feet. That's a non-compliant light with our thing. And, I mean, these are like small pet, you can see the light coming over the fence on the other side, and it goes into the house. It was a round frosted globe that doesn't emit or radiate much before, and he just changed it. I have pictures before he changed it, a while back, but I do have them. This has been like an ongoing thing, the board allowed, they did the same thing to where I live, when I took a lawsuit against them in 2000. They did the same thing, they put the neighbor, put his fence up like they did before here in the back of that patio, in the back there. In the back there, they raised the fence for six years and blocked the park from her. It's offset. You can see it's back about eight feet, his unit, because it's a corner unit, and they put a fence, I mean, extended heightened fence for two years, no, six years.
Thank you, Douglas. That's your time.
All right.
Okay, that is the last of our oral communications, and so we'll go ahead and bring it back to the agenda. On the agenda next is going to be a set of items that have to do with reports by council and staff. Item number three are brief reports on council member activities and brief announcements. I remind my fellow council members that this is not about our committee assignments, it's just very brief reports. Try to keep it within a minute, no, absolutely no more than, you know, maybe just a bit more than that, but just brief reports ever since our December 21st meeting, if you have any contacts with the community that you'd like to report on. And Councilmember Wei has her hand raised.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. First, this is our official meeting, so I really like to welcome city manager Jim Trup. And I have two brief reports on the activities. On January 9th, I attended the Taoyuan and Cupertino High Schools forum, and it's really nice to have, you know, experiences, real-time experience exchange between our high school students in Cupertino and in Taoyuan, Taiwan. And they talk about COVID before, after what they can do. It's inspiring to hear teenagers talk about the future. And the second one is the Cal Cities Association's Peninsula Executive Board meeting. We met, and then we talked about education sessions and future sessions that we can do with our Peninsula Division. And so one upcoming event for the council members is on January 26th, 11:30. We were going to host a Housing in Your City event, which should be very informative. And one more brief event is the Lunar New Year. We're going to have a Year of the Tiger coming up February 1st, which is the Lunar New Year's Day, and the city, not city council, the Asian American Business Council of the Chamber of Commerce is hosting an online celebration, and please mark the date, which is February 10th, from 5:00 to 6:30. It's a Thursday. We were going to do a fiscal one, but because of COVID, we decided to do online. You're going to have great Chinese food delivered to your home, so please, again. Thank you.
All right, great. Thank you very much, Councilmember Wei. Next, we have Councilmember Willie.
Yeah, just a couple of things to update. So I attended the Code Red, which is about climate change and the impacts, and how we should be trying to do everything we can to reduce that. I'd also like to just ask about the resident comments, if the city manager could kind of give us an update about Keith being moved, since we've had several residents that have asked about that, moving him away from McClellan Ranch. Housing being so important, you know, the ADU question that we had from Kendra, I would ask, has somebody from city staff been out to actually look at that? I'm a strong believer in following the rules, that protects everybody and safety, but sometimes decisions get made without actually seeing and understanding the actual site or situation. So perhaps you could give us an update at some point on that. And I'll leave it at that for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Willie. Next, we have Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. So on January 13th, I attended the Cal Cities Orientation for the Environmental Quality Policy Committee, and also I toured on the 10th, did a self-guided tour with a member of the public of the VTA system, and visited Berryessa, Milpitas, and Deardon stations, traveled on Barth Light Rail, the new 568 Express Line down to Gilroy, and we spent a little over eight hours traveling around the system, and I worked out all the kinks with my Clipper cards, so please get out on VTA and use the system. It's excellent. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Moore. Next, we have Vice Mayor Chow.
Hi, on the screen, you see that I looked into the Housing Commission agenda and find out our housing commission is still doesn't do much. And then I find out Menlo Park Housing Commission has a lot of applications for, to use their BMR fund for low-income ownership housing and so on. I have emailed this information to the Housing Commission and the Planning Commission. If the fellow council members would like that information, please ask the city manager. And then tomorrow, I will be moderating a speech by Fred Keely. This will be hosted by the local League of Women Voters, Southwest Santa Clara Valley. And he is a former Assembly Member, pro ten, and co-chair of the Santa Cruz County, and he is a lecturer at the San Jose State University. He said he will make the housing and RINAN, all these complex issues, very easy to understand. He will talk about the history and the current housing bills, and the proposed initiative. So you can look up the League of Women Voters site for how to register. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. And as for my own contacts, I will go ahead and report out that in this last session, on the first Friday in January, our new city manager Jim Trup and I were the guests over at the Chamber Legislative Action Committee meeting. So that's always a good meeting. As most people know, I was the chamber president when elected in 2014, and was able to work with our board of directors and, you know, frankly, do a good job with my colleagues in seeing us through the last recession. And so with regard to this past visit, it was also on Zoom. Jim and I took it from Community Hall, social distance with masks, of course. But, you know, this was an opportunity to share some thoughts at the very beginning of the year, and so that was, I think, a good introduction towards that sector of the business community. My own activities as mayor this year with a new city manager, right at the very beginning of the year, we've been, you know, doing some onboarding, and, you know, I think it's been... been by and large very successful, so it's a good transition and I think that, you know, we have a lot of bright spots ahead of us for 2022. At this point, I'm going to go ahead and go on to item number four. This is our reports on committee assignments, but I will ask the city manager, if there were follow-ups to any of the items that council mentioned on item three, please feel free to use part of your city manager update on item five to address any of them. And so does anyone have reports on committee assignments that have taken place since December 21st? Vice Mayor Chow.
Oh, no.
You don't, okay. And so we'll go ahead and go to Councilmember Moore.
Okay, very briefly, on the 13th, I attended the VTA PAC and was re-elected chair for the second year and we approved $1 million for the I-280 Trail East segment. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Willie? And congratulations, Councilmember Moore, on your reelection as Chair of the VTA PAC. That's Policy Advisory Committee, by the way. I think that you probably mentioned that, but Councilmember Willie, take it away.
Yes, so January 12th, our Silicon Valley Clean Energy Monthly Meeting went over the priorities for 2022, but noteworthy items, new geothermal project came online in January, a slate solar and storage project will be coming online in February. Silicon Valley Clean Energy is still working with the CCA to solicit more projects for clean energy that don't exist, asking suppliers out there to bring those forth. And also that 2022 will have the REACH Codes 2.0 and so we'll be working on those. I'll leave it at that for tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Willie. Councilmember Wei, did you have anything to report on since December 21st on committee assignments? Okay, not saying the unmute going there, so I will go ahead and report out on my own committee assignments. I'm on the VTA Board and so we did have a board meeting this past session and that went well, our 2022 is starting well at VTA. And there are a lot of activities happening, of course, and we have quite a few items to consider in our normal course of work, but given the fact that we had a lot of activities last year that were unanticipated, we're working our way through that. But it is, it is heartening to be able to report that the agency is opening up back its services and things are going forward in as normal fashion as we can make it. As part of those activities from last year, we did have a cyber breach at the earlier part of 2021 and there was a committee formed of the VTA Board members to help ensure that we have a successful cyber audit to, to help guard against future breaches. There was ransom asks for, with regard to the breach last year. And so we did conduct and conclude our process for selecting a vendor to go ahead and conduct that, that cybersecurity audit. And so there we also took applications from all across the country and so we should have a really good, you know, prospectus going forward and ensuring the data. And of course, you know, as with all the agencies that we share in Santa Clara County, a lot of those best practices will go forward throughout our jurisdictions. So those are my contacts on committee assignments and so let's go ahead and move on to our city manager report, item five. And so, Jim, welcome to the city of Cupertino for your first regular city council meeting and so you have item five for the city manager's report.
Great, thank you. It's, it's sort of a brief one tonight, just want to say good evening to everybody. Well, I'm so glad to be here. This is my first update and it follows what we've done in the past and for looking at COVID, our most current information is as of the 17th, which is yesterday. And some of the different updates, the Santa Clara County Department of Health released guidance on testing, excuse me, the county recommends that the antigen tests be used for purposes of shortening isolation or quarantine periods for those who've tested positive, been exposed to a person who might have COVID. Some data for, for all the number of people out there, countywide, there's been 224, almost 225,000 cases of those, 50,000 have been since January 3rd of 2022, about 3,400 cases on a seven-day average and possibly 2,400 of those were coming from January 23rd going forward. The case rates we've seen are the highest since the last, in the last two years. Hospitalizations, though, are starting to rise, but we do have ICU bed availability that remains stable, so that's a good sign. The other good sign is 82% of the county's population has been fully vaccinated, it's not just Cupertino, but the whole county. And that's meeting one of the metrics to remove the countywide face covering mandate if we can fit all the other pieces in there, too. This county of Santa Clara remains, we're at the red tier, so that's why we still have the mandates going on. There's 268, or sorry, said that wrong, 2,688 cases by zip code, which is up 1,000 since January 3rd, so we're seeing that, that Omicron really hit us hard. Cupertino does continue to have a lowest case rate per 100,000 residents in the county, so that's good, we've all gone out and got our vaccinations. The other one, testing's going to be coming back, so testing will return to the city Monday, January 31st and it'll be from 9:30 to 4:30. It'll be over at the senior center. Appointments can be scheduled at the WWW, and it's a long one, it's SCCFreeTest.org, so SCCFreeTest.org. Tests remain available also at countywide locations, they're also at Walgreens on Bollinger and El Camino Health on Valco Parkway. So that's sort of the COVID update. One other one for Parks and Rec, excuse me, the City of Cupertino Community Funding Grant Applications Deadline will be February 1st, 2022. This year, the program will be facilitated through the city website, so for more information, if you just go to Cupertino.org/communityfunding, all one word, community funding, or if you email it to communityfunding, all one word, at Cupertino.org, that'll work, too. And Mayor, that's all I had for tonight.
Great, thank you very much, Jim. And we'll go on to our consent calendar. Our consent calendar, yes, Councilmember Moore, did you, and I see Vice Mayor Chow has a hand raised as well. Was there anything from either of you, Vice Mayor Chow?
Could the city manager respond to the public comment regarding the reassignment of keys and maybe the light code enforcement issue? Perhaps an instruction about how to file Cupertino 311 complaint for this kind of potential code violation?
Vice Mayor Chow, I'm going to cut you off there and just very briefly say that the city manager did address the Parks and Rec issue briefly. With regard to follow-up, I, I think that it's more appropriate for you to ask the city manager directly offline, since we haven't agendized a particular item in substance and that was really just a city manager report out. So if there was a brief kind of follow-up, you know, the city manager provides it. And at this point, let's just go on to the consent calendar. If there is follow-up, of course, needed in our future council meetings, then we'll be able to, be able to agendize that properly and notice the public on, on that type of discussion. Councilmember Moore, you have your hand raised?
Are we on to consent?
I'm going to go ahead and call consent right now, that's items six through 13. Would you like to pull an item from consent, Councilmember?
Yes, please. Mayor Paul, I'd like to pull numbers nine, 12 and 13 for some brief comments.
Okay, so may I have, Vice Mayor Chow, did you want to pull anything other than items nine, 12 and 13? Council, Vice Mayor Chow?
No.
No, okay. May I have a motion? Oh, let me go to, I don't see any members of the public with their hands raised and so I take it that, besides nine, 12 and 13, that there aren't any additional requests to pull items. I see our city attorney with a hand raised. Chris, did you want to speak to the consent items on this point before I call for a motion?
If, if I may, Mayor, so item, I'm sorry, I'm out of order, I apologize.
Okay, very good, so let me go ahead and ask for a motion for items number six, seven, eight, 10 and 11. And so will someone move those items on consent? Councilmember Moore?
So moved.
And Councilmember Wei, would you like to second?
Yes, I'll second it.
I don't see further hands raised for discussion on those items and again, those are six, seven, eight, 10 and 11 on consent. Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call vote on that part of the consent item?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Sorry, this is, we are voting on which item?
Items six, seven, eight, 10 and 11.
We are separating them out, right?
Yes, this is the items that were not pulled from the consent calendar.
But I mean, are we approving the rest of them with this vote or just separating?
No, this is approval of the consent calendar, Council, Vice Mayor Chow.
So the approval for the rest of the items?
Yes, that is correct.
And I'll abstain.
Okay.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries with child standing.
Okay, very good, we'll go ahead and go to item number nine on the consent calendar. The subject is consider approving the attached addendum to the Memoranda of Understanding between the City of Cupertino and Cupertino Employees Association, CEA, IFPT Local 21 and the Operating Engineers Union Local Number Three, which is OE3, AFLCIO, for the period specified in the agenda. Councilmember Moore, since you pulled the item, did you want to preface it before we heard from staff on it?
If there is a brief staff report, I'd rather hear that first and then I can ask my questions afterwards.
Okay, can, I see our Director of Human Resources and Finance, Christine Alfaro, is here and has her camera on. Christina, did you want to, or Director Alfaro, did you want to speak to this item, item number nine?
Yes, Mayor, I can definitely do that. Good evening, Mayor Paul, City Council. This item is related to the construct, so it's a side letter with our two bargaining units, CEA and OE3, and what the side letter does is, it does two things. One is it sets aside a 125 plan that allows us to administer our health and new benefit. And the second thing that it does is it sets up the guidelines for constructive receipts or the cash out, leave that, the leave that you have available to cash out for the IRS. If you have the ability to cash that out, you have to be taxed on the amount you would be allowed to cash out. The only way around this tax law is to constructively say that you are not going to be receiving those dollars. You have to make an irrevocable decision to say, if I have 80 hours of vacation, I can cash out this year. At the beginning of the year or some other timeframe, you'd say, yes, I am going to cash it out, at which point you could cash it out for that year, or no, I'm not going to cash it out, at which point, absent some catastrophic event, you would not be allowed to cash it out. And so it's simply putting those two items into a side letter with our bargaining units.
Okay, thank you, Director Alfaro, and I don't see hands raised from our council and I don't see hands raised from the public. I'll entertain a motion, or rather, Councilmember Moore, you have your hand raised now?
Thank you. So I was wondering, have there been council members who have been reimbursed in the past for having their own healthcare provided and, and I was wondering how this, the policy regarding the vacation was arrived at? I'm a little, I'm curious about it because I'm, I'm used to hearing like a use it or lose it policy, this doesn't seem to be following that and I, I'm wondering if, from a policy standpoint, are we encouraging people to not take vacations and, and take cash out? I'd like to hear a little more about that. And I have one concern regarding the, the attachments that we have, the side letter agreements, it has to do with the signatures, I'm seeing the red lines that were added and we have signatures which are at the bottom and I'm wondering if I'm looking at a document that is, needs to have the signatures updated, I'm just a little confused about what, what I'm looking at there, because it looks as though there's been changes to the two side letter agreements with the redlining. Okay, so, so three questions there, thank you.
I'm going to cover two of those and then I will have our Human Resources Director start looking at the red line to see if there's, I know there was a desk item that added a signature that came in last week, but the first question regarding city council members having a health and new benefit, that was something that the city did have at one point in time. It is no longer available to council members, we still do have it for our appointed groups or city managers, city attorney, our management group, our unrepresented group, and then also, CEA also has that provision. But to your question about council members, we did have it, we no longer have that provision. And sorry, I was not writing down, the second, oh, second question was use it or lose it. So in California, we don't have that provision, so vacation continues to accrue up to whatever maximum that someone may have and at that point, someone can use the vacation if they choose, so they can, or they can cash it out effectively. But because you are earning that as your money as you're earning it at vacation, so what happened is either you'd stop accruing it or you use that vacation to bring it down so you could continue to accrue after that. And then Vanessa, I don't know if you've had a chance to see the, the red lines or look up what Councilmember Moore was asking about? See, Vanessa has her camera on, thank you. Vanessa Guerra, Human Resources Manager for the city.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I took a look at the side letter for the premium only plan that has the redlining on it and we were attempting to incorporate comments from the bargaining units with some concerns they had and wanted to illustrate to them that we had in fact incorporated their comments to the side letter. So I, yeah, I can definitely get those re-signed with a final, it is challenging in these digital times, but we can certainly put those in a different format and have them re-signed.
Through the, through the mayor, so actually a question for our city attorney, do we need to have a, a new document with the new signatures and the date at the bottom, because I'm looking at older ones?
I don't, I don't, I don't think having them re-signed would change the legal effect of the agreement.
Okay, so we don't have to, we can, we can approve this now. And then, and again, through, through the mayor, and thank you Christina and Vanessa for, for the answers on these questions. I'm wondering when the policy changed regarding council members and who had that, who, who started the policy and when did it end? Thank you.
And these are going to be, sorry, go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, I'm sorry, so I, I think, I think we're happy to address those questions for you, Councilmember Moore, I just, I guess I would caution with the full question, council, whether, you know, that's something that's been agendized tonight or not.
Okay, thank you, Chris. I guess my question would be, because the staff report uses the word employees and I believe we are technically employees, so I got a little bit confused and that's what raised the question in my mind initially. Okay, but I can have the answer offline, that, that works, too. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion on this item number nine. And I'll bring it forward for purposes of moving it forward and for discussion. So I'll move the recommended action, may I have a second, Councilmember Willie?
Yes, I second.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Willie. I'm just going to make a very brief comment. I, you know, I'm not sure why Councilmember Moore brought up the issue of opting out of the insurance, the health insurance. I know I tried to do it, I know someone tried to do it before me and they were allowed to, someone tried to do it after me and they were allowed to. And so I felt it was very irregular and strange and I've never really gotten a satisfactory answer as to how we were treated, frankly. And I recognize and appreciate and respect the city attorney's comment on this, but... and appreciate and respect the city attorney's comment on this. But I just had to say that because of Councilmember Moore's comment on this particular item. But otherwise, as to the subject matter of this item, I'm fine with going ahead and passing it. I don't see anyone with their hand raised other than me on this comment. And so I will go ahead and ask Madam City Clerk to please conduct a roll call vote on this item.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, Kirsten. And so I believe the other items were 12 and 13. That's the consideration for item 12 of accounts payable for the period ending December 20th, 2021. And Councilmember Moore, you are also the person who pulled item number 12. Did you want to preface this before we brought it over to staff to provide, I would assume, any answers to questions that you may have on, on this period of accounts payable?
I would. Thank you, Mayor Paul. However, I see the Vice Mayor has her hand raised. I don't, I don't.
Sorry, I am not feeling well, so I will be stepping away a little, and then I'll come back.
Okay, Vice Mayor Chow, feel better. You know, please take all the time you need. So let's go ahead and bring this back to Councilmember Moore with regard to the purpose of pulling item number 12.
Okay, thank you. My question is regarding, there's an $8,000 payment, and it's for the Cupertino Chamber annual contract, first installment. The problem I have is that I went through the, the records, and I could not find the agreement with the Chamber of Commerce to, to read about it. And so I don't want to approve it because I don't understand it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Moore. I see that Zach Korach has his camera on. Zach, did you want to speak to this question from Councilmember Moore?
Sure, thank you, Mayor Paul. Councilmember Moore, I don't have any direct information on that particular payment. If you give me a few minutes, I can do some, some research and digging. And I would also recommend if you have further questions on this specific payment register or on the following item too, I can look at, look for all of them at the same time.
Thank you, Zach. I would be fine with having this number 12 come back at the next council meeting and have the, the contract brought forth. That would help if that's, if that's okay with Mayor Paul?
I'm fine with it. If anyone wanted to move the item, I'll go ahead and provide that opportunity. Please buy a raise of hand if you want to go ahead on council to move item 12. At this point, I don't see a raised hand. So let's go on to item 13. That's the consideration of accounts payable for the period ending January 3rd, 2022. Councilmember Moore?
And thank you, Mayor Paul. So an issue here was San Jose Water Company, a $58,000 water bill. I know that we have the changes come down through, well, it might have come down through the state, but it was through the county regarding our, our water usage. And my concern is, it's kind of a public works question, actually, is have we had our sprinkler systems retrofitted because we're not allowed to be watering during rainfall or 48 hours afterwards? And I would have thought that sometime there would have been some cost needed to, to demonstrate that we've made some change to the sprinkler programming, you know, that the, that the city has some way of detecting rainfall so that this, this system is shut down so that we're actually following the law. And I don't know if, if there's somebody on this call that, on this meeting that's able to answer that question.
I see Jimmy Tan, our Public Works Representative, is here. Jimmy, did you want to speak to that question from Councilmember Moore?
Sure, I can. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. Regards to the question, the, yeah, the city has already implemented smart irrigation controllers throughout, you know, the city. And we're actually installing additional ones within the grounds division throughout various different parks locations as well.
Through, through the mayor, and thank you, Jimmy. Would you happen to have a percentage for how many of the sprinkler systems have been updated at this point?
I don't actually, you know, I can get that information, and I can pass it along to the city manager, and then so that he can forward it to you.
Okay, thank you. I would appreciate that. And I, yes, and I have some other questions about the water bill in general, which can be asked offline as well. So I'm not sure, Mayor Paul. I think I might actually want to have this item returned to us with some more information about it.
That's fine with me. I will say that with regard to the sprinkler systems and the sensors, it has been a work in progress over the course of the last several years. When I first came onto council at the end of 2014, that was actually one of the subjects of litigation that was going on with the contract with a third-party vendor. The sensors were not as good at that point. And so that litigation was resolved within, I believe, the first year and a half or two years of my time on council. So that would have been before 2017. But, yeah, no, I think you raised an interesting point, and it would be good to get more information with regard to this. You know, I don't see any hands raised, and so it doesn't look like there is an exigent need to pass item 13 either tonight. And so we'll go ahead and table that until our February 1st meeting. So let's go ahead and move on to the next item on our agenda. That is second reading of ordinances, seeing none. We will go on to our public hearings. Our public hearings are two this evening. We have item number 14. That is the subject being abatement of a public nuisance from weeds or other fire hazards pursuant to provisions of Cupertino Municipal Code, which are recited in the agenda. And I believe we have a representative from the county, Mo Kumray, who comes in a couple of times every year. Welcome, Mo. So let me see if you are in, oh, yes, you are. Item number 14. Very good. Welcome, Mo. And I'll go ahead and refer this over as well to our city attorney, who has a hand raised. Chris, did you want to speak to this item before we bring in the presentation from presumably our representative from county?
Yes, briefly, Mayor. So I did want to note that there is a property located at 10175 McLaren Place, where Vice Mayor Chow is the record owner of the property. I just want to note for the record that she is not present. She has excused herself from the meeting. If she does return to the meeting before we're done with the consideration of this, this item, we can, we can address that, that her ownership of that property then.
And then ask Vice Mayor Chow to recuse if she does return, is what I'm.
With respect to that property, yes, correct.
Okay, well, thank you very much, City Attorney Johnson. And I believe that we will go to our representative from county. Mo, welcome back. We're always very happy to see you in Cupertino. I know that you have a year-round job to do and a lot of properties to evaluate. So would you like to provide the presentation prior to us opening up the commentary from the public?
Mayor Paul, I actually have the presentation and.
Oh, you do? Okay, I apologize, Madam City Clerk.
All right. And Mo will be available for questions after.
Okay, very good.
So I will go ahead and share my screen. Okay, you can see my screen, I assume. This is the commencement of our weed abatement season. The purpose of our weed abatement program is to prevent fire hazards and other nuisances posed by vegetative growth and accumulation of combustible materials. The program is managed by the Santa Clara County Department of Agriculture, and it's in accordance with our city code 9.08, which requires property owners to remove or destroy weeds on their property for fire and public health protection. Owners are required to abate annually by April 30th and to maintain their properties throughout the year. Each year, the county prepares a report of all properties that have been noncompliant and provides that report to the city. All impacted parcels will remain on the list for three years. If the parcels are found to be hazard-free according to the safety standards during that time, they will be removed. On December 7th, council adopted resolution number 21-112, accepting the county report and setting tonight's hearing so that the county can notify the property owners on the report. So as noted, owners are responsible for maintaining the safety standards on their property. The complete descriptions are mailed to the property owners, but in general, grass height must not exceed six inches after the compliance deadline. This requirement includes clearance around roadways and driveways. They are responsible for clearing flammable vegetation, a minimum of 30 feet from any structures, any accumulation of combustible debris, vegetation under eaves of houses, from roofs and gutters, and trimming tree branches 10 feet from the chimney. So this is, those are a couple of photos, not from our city, but I didn't want to, not to single anyone out. So this is before and after. The photo on the left is noncompliant, and the photo on the right is compliant. Here is a parcel lot, and on the left is noncompliant, and on the right is compliant. So the homeowners have a couple of options to complete the required work to abate. First, the homeowner may complete the work themselves, or second, the county assigns an authorized contractor to complete the work with the charges appearing on the next property bill. The county begins conducting property inspections on April 30th, and they continue this process through October. And the parcel should be maintained throughout the year, however. The county annual inspection fee will be waived for all parcels that pass inspection. Waived fees are then billed to the city to cover the county costs to inspect that property. On December 15th, the county mailed a notice to the property owners listed on the report indicating that their property must be cleared of hazards according to the safety standards by April 30, and notifying them of tonight's public hearing to consider any objections to the proposed removal. On December 22nd, the city sends a courtesy reminder outlining the same information. And so tonight, the action before you is to adopt resolution 22-017, ordering the abatement of public nuisance. And property owners will have until April 30th to abate their properties. The purpose of tonight's public hearing is for impacted property owners to contest the matter of proposed abatement. And that concludes my presentation. And as, as mentioned, Mo Kumray, our weed abatement manager, is on hand for any questions.
Thank you, Kirsten. Much appreciated. And so I don't see hands up from our council. And I do ask that we go ahead and follow the, the general procedure for hearings this year. So we'll go ahead and go to members of the public for any commentary first or questions, and then we'll go back to our representative from county, as well as staff, if there are follow-ups on those. And then we can have the council questions, followed by any motions and discussion. So at this point, I see one hand raised from the public. That is Lisa Warren. And I'll remind our members of the public that you'll have until Lisa has concluded speaking to raise your hand. And if you don't raise your hand before then, we will not be calling on you for public comment. But if you do, you will. You'll have three minutes. And again, our first speaker is Lisa Warren. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. There I am. Okay, thank you. I'm just curious, and I think I've never thought to ask this before, but when a property owner is required to abate their weeds, are they, I assume they can't be told what to, how to do that, whether they rototill, mow, poison, et cetera? And I would like to know if that's the case, because this year, we have a very large site that's got a lot of weeds, and I would hate to have poison added to that site, the entire site. So I'm wondering if there is some limitation to how these things can be handled. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. And Lisa was the only speaker from the public, and so we'll go ahead and bring this back. Would anyone from either staff or from the county like to speak to the question from the public with regard to the manner in which abatement occurs?
This, this is Mo. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Okay. The county's process for abatement is all mechanical. We don't use chemicals of any kind. So the answer for them is from us. We do not use poisons or herbicides at all. It's all weed whackers, mowers, and disking. Property owners can do anything to abate the weeds that's permissible within the city's regulations. We don't tell them how to do it. We only take charge of how we do it, which is, like I said, strictly mechanical.
Okay, thank you, Mo. And we have a hand raised from Councilmember Moore.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Paul. And kind of for transparency's sake, if you look at Exhibit A, the first item, the first property is the Valco property on Wolf Road. And so I think that that was a really excellent question from the, from Lisa Warren regarding the manner of the weed abatement. So for that particular project, you have a soil contamination issue with contamination in the upper layer. So I think it's something that I would personally want our city attorney to coordinate with the county so that we don't have rototillers going out there as a method of, of weed abatement. And then there's, there is the matter of the soil being perhaps soft in areas, and, and workers could end up, because they have had some soil disturbance, kind of sinking into the soil in places. There's some slopes there, and it does have a, gosh, there's the, the Prop 65 warnings on that, on the perimeter of the site as well. So is that something that our attorney would like to speak to? So we have worker safety going on during the abatement?
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. And Chris, did you want to speak to those questions from councilmen?
So just, I would just note that the application of herbicide is largely regulated by state law. And so we could certainly look at that issue from a legal perspective. What, you know, you know, that said, there, there might be a possibility of working with the, the property owner to come to a, a reasonable solution, given the size of the parcel and given potential impact.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes, I'm sorry. I thought, I thought I heard that it was, they were only allowed to use mechanical methods. Okay, so they can't use the herbicides. So my, my question is, you know, how can we ensure that they do not go out with a rototiller when we know that there is soil contamination and some of it's at shallow levels? So to maintain worker safety if they're going to have to use mechanical methods?
So if this, if this work is going to be done, if the county is going to do the abatement, I would defer to, to Mo as to what county protocols are with respect to, you know, this kind of site.
Well, I, I can say that we would be, generally, we look at what would be the most cost-effective method of doing it. But there are cases like this where that's not necessarily the best way to do it. If the city has requests that we handle this, for example, just with people using weed whips, that's what we'll do. We'll, we'll take direction. We take direction very well, and would be happy to follow any instructions that you give us for any particular sites. That one, we, we understand, and I have notes. I'll put in the record that before we do any work, we'll check with, with city staff before we perform any abatement on that site.
Okay, thank you, Mo. Thank you, Chris. And let me go and ask our council if there is a motion forthcoming. And I can go ahead and close out the, the public hearing. There were no members of the public speaking to any particular parcels. were no members of the public speaking to any particular parcels. The recommended action is to adopt Resolution Number 22-017, ordering abatement of public nuisance from weeds or other fire hazards pursuant to provisions of Cupertino Municipal Code, Chapter 9.08, and Resolution Number 21-112, and to conduct the hearing aforementioned. And so, is there a motion to that effect? I will go ahead and make that motion, I don't see hands raised, would anyone like to second that motion? And I see Councilmember Willie with a hand raised.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Willie, and so we have a motion on the table and a second. I see Councilmember Moore with a hand raised, Councilmember Moore, would you like to start us on the deliberative portion of this?
Uh, sure, thank you, Mayor Paul, I, I have another, well, I'm afraid it's a clarifying question from Mo. So are we going to expect the, the county to conduct the abatement of the weeds on that, on that, it's 33 acres, is the county going to be doing this, who pays for, and, and who pays for that abatement? Thank you.
Okay, I'll go ahead and open the hearing back up so that that question can be answered. Thank you, Mo, for, for allowing that interruption, and so, please, if you can answer Councilmember Moore's question.
The expectation is that the property owner takes care of it, we're here in case they don't. In that case, we would then be the ones to order the abatement, which would not be the entire parcel, it would be perimeters, crossbreaks, to break it down into areas no bigger than five acres that have tall grass, all of which have 30 feet of clearance around them, so it wouldn't be a, a total clearance of the entire property. But our expectation is for all of these properties, is that the owner take care of it, and then we're here for those cases when they don't.
And through the mayor, Mo, when, when the owner does not take care of it, is the county paying for the abatement, or does the owner get sent a bill?
Any fees assessed against the property would be going through their property tax bill, we'll have another hearing in probably early August, in which you'll have an opportunity to hear any challenges to those fees before they're actually assessed on the property tax, but normally, the property owner pays for all the costs to the county for, for those, for those works, and again, they'll have an opportunity to contest those fees with you prior to them going on the tax bill.
Okay, thank you, Mo, thank you, Mayor Paul.
Okay, likewise, thank you, Mo, thank you, Councilmember Moore, and I, I do appreciate the questions and the discussion, you know, just for my own part, on a discussion point, I, I think it would be great to see more of a mechanical treatment, it's great to see a good stewardship of the land, and making sure that we, you know, maintain standards of, of quality care and safety here, and so, let me go ahead and see if there are any other questions or comments, but let me, let me go ahead and close that public hearing again, and, and ask, rather than for questions, unless directed at other fellow councilmembers, to see if there are any comments on this item prior to bringing this to a roll call vote. I, I don't see further hands raised, and so, let us go ahead and, and take that roll call vote, Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries with Chow absent.
Okay, thank you very much, Kirsten, and we will go on to Item Number 15, that is the consideration of a development and architectural and site approval permits that would allow the replacement of seven storage buildings with three new buildings between one and three stories in height, to allow for a 166,845 square foot storage facility. There are other items as well, there are other facets, I should say, to this item that are indicated in the agenda, and so, I'll go ahead and ask if our city manager would like to introduce the presenter from staff, this being a public hearing, I'll remind people of the general order of things, we have a presentation from staff, if the applicant would like to give a presentation, then that presentation is given, then we'll go to members of the public for any comments, and then we'll go back for any follow-ups from staff as well as the applicant, at which point, we will have questions from council prior to engaging in motion and deliberation. So, let us go ahead, Mr. City Manager Trup, did you have a presentation to introduce to the public?
Um, yes, thank you, Mayor, and I'm looking to see on here with everybody if Ben is on here, our Director of Community Development. There he is, there, we have Ben Foo on here for that, thank you, Ben.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the introduction of the item, I'm accompanied here tonight with, from John Martier, Senior Planner with the Community Development Department, my name is Ben Foo, Director of Community Development, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the introduction of the item, the item does include a number of other associated actions as well, in addition to what you mentioned, the construction of new buildings, and also, replacement of an existing apartment, manager's apartment, office, sales area, construction of a new trash enclosure, replacement of an electric vehicle gate, new, new fence, and also updating the landscaping for the property as well. John Martier, I'm joined with here, will be able to provide a little bit more details on some of these items, and, and planning commission action that occurred last, last month, as well as we will be available to answer any questions. John?
Thanks, Ben, John Martier, Senior Planner, Community Development Department, and as Ben said, that he, I think he's summarized, as well as the mayor, the scope of the project succinctly and correctly. So this item was presented to the planning commission on a recommendation, and the planning commission heard this item on December 14th, 2021, and the planning commission's recommendation was that the city council approve this proposed modification with a four, four votes, four and one vote absent, that was Commissioner compelled. So the project location is adjacent to, just, just south of the Mary Avenue Bike Bridge along Mary Avenue, it is currently a storage facility, so the use is not changing, there are seven single-story buildings on site, which approximately are about 59,000 square feet, which includes a managed unit, as was discussed before, again, this will be a construction of three new buildings between one and three stories, about 150,000 square feet, and, there is effects, as, as a, excuse me, there is a fence exception for the electronic vehicle gate as well, and there will be a new six-foot-tall wrought iron fence located on the eastern and southern portion of the property, and certain landscape updates in the vicinity of the Mary Avenue Bridge. So, a couple of illustrations of, of the existing proposed, as you can see, the existing is, has about seven single-story buildings, proposed, really only three buildings, with one of them remaining, so throughout this presentation, I'll be referring to buildings by, by letters, so Building A is the center building, which is about 30 square, I'm sorry, 30 feet tall, about three stories, the largest building to be built, B is a two-story building on the southern edge, C is the, another two-story building on the eastern edge, and D is the existing building to be maintained, but, but improved throughout this process. So we can see the facade of Building A, again, which is in the middle of the, of the parcel, it's about 30 feet tall and about three stories in height, Building B, again, along the southern edge of the parcel, that's right next to the, the Cupertino Port Guard, which is about two stories in height. And then what you see over here is what a perspective of Building C, which is what someone would see, let's say, biking up to the Mary Avenue Bridge, or walking along Mary Avenue, in the foreground, what, sorry, the background, you see the lighted areas of Building A and Building B. So, some development standards, a little tricky for these types of uses, because these, the city does not have specific development standards for these types of uses, as well as in the zone, highest structures can be up to 30 feet tall, which is this one that's complying with, the front setback is, there's no front side or rear setbacks specifically within the zone, but the front setback is proposed along, minimally to be 40 feet along Mary Avenue, the side, the closest side setback is along the southern side of five feet, and the rear is zero feet, which, which is essentially that building that is existing and proposed to be maintained. There is no parking standards for, in our municipal code for this type of use, which means a storage facility, so the applicant had completed a parking analysis and traffic analysis, and found that the, the impact would be about, the needed amount of parking to satisfy its parking, was traffic impact would be about 20, 20 spaces for the whole development, however, the applicant is proposing about 40 spaces throughout the project site. Some connectivity, so existing on the eastern side of the parcels are 20-foot wide, is being required a 20-foot wide easement to connect the I-2A Trail to the Mary Avenue Bridge, and I'll go over that in the next slide, with, how's that, how that's going to look. So if you see, here's the site, site view over here of the, of the storage facility, as you see, the easements right follows along this, this, this trail right here where the blue arrow is going to be, and which will connect from, please see my cursor, connect from the future I-2A Trail going along here, and then going up through the Mary Avenue, connected with the Mary Avenue Bridge. Tree removal in replacement, there are about eight protected trees on site, as protected because they are development trees, they include red iron bark, tulip, this Chinese pistachio, and the tree of heaven, the replacements, and of course, with our code, it would be seven 36-inch block, box blood good, London plans, and one 24-inch box Chinese pistachio, primarily located near that trail easement. Fence exception, this could be consistent with the code, anytime, anytime you have a security gate, a mechanical gate, fence exceptions required, this is approximately going to be about 65 feet from the property line between Buildings B and C. Environmental review, this project is deemed to be categorically exempt from CEQA as an initial development project, we do have our CEQA consultant from Placeworks, Terry McCracken in attendance as well, so if you have any specific questions about the CEQA analysis, should be more than happy to respond to those. And conclusion, the staff recommends approval of the project, since the project in conjunction with approval address all concerns related to proposed development, and all the findings for approval of the proposed project consist with Chapters 19156, 19168, 1948, and 14.18 of the Cupertino Municipal Code may be made. One correction, with the developer from Resolution 11, it does say more than nine homes, aren't the homes proposed on the site, it should read, is Abby more than 50,000 square feet. Next up is that the city council's decision will be final, unless reconsidered within 10 days of the decision, the application may apply for bill, the applicant, excuse me, may apply for building permits at that time, and I would also like to mention that the applicant is in attendance, and their team as well, and I believe they might have a presentation themselves, and that concludes my presentation, thank you.
Great, thank you, John, and the applicant, if you'd like to provide your presentation at this point, please do.
Yes, I'm Mayor Paul, and councilmembers, thanks, John, for that presentation, I appreciate it, I'm the applicant, along with Todd Cherkel here, my name is Curtis Lee, we are with Hunter Properties, we also have our architect here, who'll give a brief presentation after, after my remarks, this has been a long time coming, we're very excited to be at this stage and to present this project to you, we bought this facility back in 2017, and we've been working with staff diligently for nearly three years to get to this point, so we, we feel like we have a great project to present to you, we feel it'll, it'll update what we've got on the site currently, which is, you know, from the 60s and 70s, it's old, it needs, needs some love, and so we're hoping to get an approval tonight, so that we can move forward and redevelop the site into something that we think will look more like our other facilities. So we are a 60-year-old development firm based in Cupertino, we used to be right down the street from this project on Valley Green Drive for about 15, 20 years, and then we've moved, and we've been in our current location, right near Stevens Creek and Wolf Road on Miller, for the last dozen years or so, so obviously, we're very familiar with Cupertino, we've done several projects, including right across from City Hall, the Civic Park Cupertino Project, is one of our successful projects that we're proud of, and on this site, like I said, we've got an older facility, we've, we've developed ground up our other eight facilities in the Bay Area, so we'd like to do the same here, to match, you know, our, our nicer facilities, and I just also wanted to mention that we do develop office, retail, and self-storage, so this is one of three product types that we develop, and, you know, we're, we're here to answer questions, and, you know, like I said, we've got Jordan Architects, who's an architectural firm out of Southern California that does primarily self-storage, and that's what they design, so they are expert on that side of it, and so I will turn it over to Marcelo, and he's got a presentation that will show you more of the details of the project we're presenting, and, like I said, Todd and I are here to answer any questions after that presentation, thank you.
Perfect, thanks, thank you, Curtis, and welcome, Curtis and Todd, and I believe you said Marcelo is providing the presentation from your architectural firm? And so, welcome, Marcelo, as well, I, let me check in the attendees.
Yeah, he's under the, he's under the.
Bruce Jordan.
Yeah.
Okay, one more time, he's under, oh, Bruce Jordan, okay, got it.
Yeah.
Okay, welcome. And let me just check in briefly with our city clerk, so Kirsten, do you have the presentation, or are they sharing the screen here?
They are sharing the screen.
Okay, so we might be running into technical difficulties, I see that Marcelo is unmuted, but I'm not hearing anything or seeing a screen share, which is perfectly understandable, given all the different types of devices we have, but I am seeing a screen share now.
Oh, there we go, it's a good start, I'm not hearing any audio, but it's a good start.
It's a good start, indeed. Okay, so just to let the speaker know, we're not hearing audio as well, and so, what we might do, what we might do is call for a quick break, maybe a five-minute recess for the presenter, perhaps to reboot the machine, and so, let's go ahead and do that, we're at 8:11 right now, we'll reconvene at 8:17 in approximately five minutes, okay, so we'll see you in a few, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely, good evening to you as well.
So, you guys can see my screen right now, correct?
We can hear you, but we don't see your screen.
Okay, let me see, share the screen again. I'm doing again, this, the share.
Perfect.
So, I just want to continue with the presentation that was done before, just want to explain to you the development team, the owner, Basco Bertino and Hunter Properties, and actually also, like, we always understand that gonna be the same as Jordan Architects, I am representing Jordan Architects, 40-years-old company specialized in self-storage, our winning company, civil engineer and landscape planner design group, and, as you know, as we were telling before, the site location is just right between the freeway and residential areas, this is an existing self-storage facility that's gonna be converted into a, you know, state-of-the-art, with three buildings, one of those gonna be in three-story, that the three-story building is a maximum of 30 feet high, that is located on the center of the site, so we have a buffer about, almost 200 feet from the residence close by. Of course, we're gonna have, as I measure, let me see here, this is the elevation, so the colors that were submitted earlier. Windows that you are seeing there is just for decoration only, those are called spander glass, that means those are fake windows, it's just for decoration only, you know, with, this is gonna be a storage facility, so there is not typically looking out, it's just for the storage wood facilities. So, a few key points that I would like to present to you is that, okay, the self-storage is centered screen, and loading activity from any adjacent properties, we have a half-acre of landscape all around and a screening, has a very low trip generation, the hours of operations is gonna be from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. seven days per week, but the office of hours, the operation is gonna be between 8:00 and 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, 9:00 to 5:00 p.m. on Saturdays and Sundays. The site gonna be light, in a way that is not bleed over any adjacent residence, we have a sophisticated security system recording any site activity, has, as we presented before, has more than the required parking, and the development team did public outreach in 2018, and presented the project for the community, which was generally well-received. So, this is all my presentation, I'm open for any question that you guys can have.
Okay, great, well, thank you very much, Marcelo, for our procedure, we're gonna go ahead and open this up to a public comment at this time, unless there is further follow-up from any member of the applicant or staff at this point, with regard to presentations, seeing none, I'll go ahead and open it up to our members of the public. I do see 12 members of the public here, but none have their hand raised, and so, I'll just provide a brief moment and just, you know, specifically, call out item 15, if you have a comment on item 15, please raise your hand, otherwise, we will be moving this back to city council, and so, I actually see an additional attendee, but I don't see any hands raised. Madam City Clerk, I take it that we did not have any members of the public emailing in on commentary to this item, is that correct?
No, Mayor, I have not received any emails.
Okay, thank you, Kirsten, and so, let's go ahead and bring this back to city council, do any members of city council have questions of either staff or the applicant representatives, and so, I do see hands from council, we'll start with council member Willie.
Yeah, couple of questions, I haven't heard how many acres this site is?
I believe it's around approximately four.
Approximately four, yeah, exactly.
So, four acres, 43,000 square feet per acre, so that would be about 15,000 square foot site, and 166,000 square, 167,000 square foot of structure, roughly? Not that it applies like it does to residential buildings, but just so the community has an idea of scale, how, how much mass is gonna be on the site, am I, my numbers somewhat close?
I'll, I don't mean to correct you, but it's about 170,000 square foot site, so it's about a one FAR, if everybody understands what that means, floor area ratio.
Yep.
So, it's, you know, the amount of square footage divided by the square footage of the land, so it's about a one.
Yeah, great, and it seems like it's pretty well set back from most, but on the one slide, it sounded like one side has a five-foot setback, maybe John can put that top view on, show us where that five-foot, that's from the property line, but what's on the other, that property line?
So the, the southern property line is a, is a Cupertino corporate yard, and that's where that five-foot setback is, the eastern property is the bike path, and then the north and west property line is the freeway.
So that five-foot setback, how high, how tall is the building for that five-foot setback, is it single-story, two-story?
That's a two-story building, yes.
Two-story, so roughly 20 feet then?
Correct.
At the, at the five-foot setback?
Correct.
Okay, and then, you said that there was outreach that was done, can you explain what that outreach consisted of?
Yes, so we did a mailing to, I forget, maybe staff can help me, I think we have to do it within 1,000 feet of our site, or, I'm, I'm not sure, but the mailing list was provided by Cupertino, so we sent that out.
So what I, what I found in the records, this is John Martin, senior planner, it's about 800 feet away from the property line.
Okay, so we sent out those mailers, we held a, an evening, you know, community meeting at a local restaurant, and we had a handful of community members that primarily live in that Mary Avenue neighborhood adjacent to us, show up, and we walked them through the project and with our boards and elevations, and, you know, kind of like we're doing here, did a presentation on, on what we're proposing to build.
So maybe the, the last question then is, okay, it's a storage yard on the side with a five-foot setback and a 20, 20-foot tall building, did you, did you actually engage the property owner of that storage yard, such that in the future, if he was thinking he was gonna turn it into a, an apartment, or a condominium, or some type of residential?
John, that's our corporation yard, that's the city's corporation.
Oh, city, okay, good enough, all right, that finishes my questions in.
Thank you.
Thank you, council member Willie, next we have council member Moore.
Hey, thank you, so first, for the applicant, I was wondering if, if you could show us two things, how the Mary Avenue Don Burnett Bridge access is adjacent to the, your property, and you're showing the, the I-280 trail connection, and thank you to staff for calling it the I-280 trail, I did notice that, and I do appreciate it, but if I could see the architectural image showing the, the trail connection, I would appreciate that, and the second one is I'd like to see the manager's unit, particularly, it looked like there could have been a second-story deck, but it might have been cut off, if you could pull up the floor plan of the second floor showing the manager, the manager apartment, I'd like to see that, okay?
I think maybe the best way to show, John, do you have that slide where you, you had the arrows that showed the bike path, maybe that's the best place to show that, and then, while we're doing that, maybe Marcelo can pull up.
I can, I can, I can share that if you need, I can, I can show it right now.
That'd be great.
Okay, and then, Mayor, afterwards, I do have a, a question for Terry McCracken from Placeworks.
So, on the screen, you can see now the site plan, and this is the trail that we were talking about, on how that connects to the residential area. I can show you now what is the residential, so we have, we have, in the first level is the office management, and upstairs is the floor plan of the residential. So we have a general living room and kitchen, two bathrooms, and two bathrooms, one is in suite, with the master bed.
Okay, thank you, and so, I'm looking at the, in the upper right-hand corner, we have the area with the vertical lines, to me, it looks like it could be a second-story deck, I'm not really sure what I'm looking at, could someone explain that?
I'm, I'm sorry, you are talking about this area, the, the open curtain to below?
No, just to, just above that, the.
Oh, this is, this, oh, no, no, yeah, this is the roof, this is the metal roof of the storage.
Okay.
This one, one, exactly, one level, this is on the second level, so on the, if you see on the elevations.
Okay, no, I, I understand.
Understand.
Okay, I understand, so I had, I actually kind of hoped that it was a deck area for them there, but it's okay.
No, no, no.
Okay, and then, if you could go back to the, the I-280 trail connection, and if somebody could just point out how the, the walkers and bicyclists are accessing the, the Don Burnett Bridge currently, just, I think it's, I think it's actually where the little, the little hand icon is right now, but if you could just clarify that for me, so if you wanted to go over the bridge right now, how do you get there?
You come down to the end of, see where Mary meets Meteor at the bottom, Marcelo, if you pull up a little bit, see where Mary Avenue meets Meteor right there?
Yes.
The street actually turns, and there's a little curb ramp there, and you can take your bike, or you can walk straight up that curb ramp and go right up the bridge, and to the right of that, Marcelo, you can go right up, yeah, right there, and across the bridge.
Uh, that's how it currently is designed?
Yes.
Okay, and you're maintaining it, that's, you're just showing the existing is going to stay the same?
Existing is gonna stay the same, and then we're connecting from the I-280 trail up the side of our property to that existing path, if you will.
Okay, I'm afraid you, you might have just confused me, rather than clarifying it, so, existing is the curved line that you're showing through, existing and proposed are the same?
I'm happy to show you a Google map of what's existing there.
Because I have it teed up.
You do, okay, go ahead, Todd. I think, yeah, there you go. So if you, if you see right now, this is the end of Mary, where it turns into Meteor on the right.
Yes, and that, and right, and we're seeing the entrance as it is right now, and the little sculpture with the quail there, and there's a bird up in the.
Correct.
Yeah.
So off to, off to the left there where that power pole is and our sign?
Mm-hmm.
That's where the new ramp would come up from the I-280 bridge, and you would take a left and get onto this existing path.
And then swing left to get, to reconnect to the bridge at the end? So you're, are you doing away with this, the current entrance to the Don Burnett Bridge? I'm a little confused?
No, all, all of this would stay the same.
Okay.
The, the connection from the 280 bridge comes up the side of our property and connects to what you see here.
Council member, I can share my, my slide that, that I think shows a good bird's-eye view of where the connection is gonna be, and how the current layout is, the Mary Avenue Bridge, if you're okay with that.
Please, yes, because I'm, I'm a little confused why this is necessary on their property if there, there's already good access to get onto the, the bridge, but you're saying you're trying to get onto the trail, okay, thank you.
So, you can see in very light, and I, you know, it's, it's very light because it's not on the property, but it's, you can see kind of how the trail kind of goes up, what you saw from the applicant was this area, if you can see my cursor, it was right here, and the, and the, and the concrete trail going up to the bridge, what would be proposed with I-280 would go following along 280, almost the 85 interchange over here, the proposed I-280 trail will go underneath the bridge over here.
Got it.
And then loop around, and then connect somewhere up about, I would say, 50 feet north of the entrance, would you guys say, 60 feet, maybe even more than that, somewhere in the middle over there.
Okay, okay, I get it, I get it, and I, as I mentioned earlier, being on the VTA PAC, I will see this end of the trail eventually come through there, through that committee, so I'm, I'm, need to understand what's going on there, so, you're, you're making a nice loop underneath the Don Burnett Bridge to, to connect.
Yeah, and I think.
Now, that makes sense.
Yeah, council member Moore, what's difficult to ascertain from this, this diagram is that the red arrow, from a elevation perspective, is much higher than the blue arrow, so you're, as you're going under and coming up the blue, you're going up a steep ramp to get to the existing trail.
Correct, okay, I, I've, I've been out there, I, I get it now that. I've, I've been out there, I get it now that you explained that configuration. And then through the mayor, if I may, I had one question for Terry McCracken. An explanation regarding the categorical exemption? And if, if Terry's can talk about the construction traffic? I'm a little bit, I'm concerned about, about that aspect to it. And, and how, how like, what's the workaround with the construction truck traffic? And considering that exempt?
Construction, um, traffic from any of the trucks, the haul, the demo, the soil that is coming out of there would be, you know, it's a temporary impact, it's less than what would be occurring under the project itself. So for the purposes of the exemption, we're not really measuring that against a threshold. I think what we would mostly be looking at for construction traffic is, you know, safety and that, that the trucks are going. I don't think there's a construction management plan that would be forthcoming, but it isn't a standard that's measured in the exemption. I don't have anything to measure it against in terms of number of trips or volume.
Okay, because it's an exemption, all right. And I, and I was wondering if our, our city attorney would want to comment on the exemption? And in your opinion, is this the right classification for, for the project?
So I, I believe the, you know, so I, I did, I did review the exemption memo. I think the conclusions are obviously the work of place, the factual conclusions are obviously the work of placeworks in our planning staff. I believe that they, that, that legal framework that they use to frame those conclusions is correct. So I, I believe it's the right framework to, to address the project.
Okay, thank you. And I, and I, you know, do recall that with the, the public storage project, that one also had a categorical exemption as well. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, council member Moore. Next, we have vice mayor Chow.
Oh, hi. I'm just wondering, what's the square footage of the existing manager's unit and office versus the proposed?
I have that at my fingertips. Marcelo, do you have that by any chance?
I have the total area of the existing building, but because this is, is less than, than what we have now. But I don't have the actual, if there is an existing manager unit, I don't have that.
Yeah, I can chime in on that, Marcelo. There's an existing manager's unit that's actually quite large. It's a four-bedroom manager's unit. So my guess is it's, you know, probably 300 to 3,500 square feet. So the one we're proposing now will be much smaller than that as far as the livable area.
If I can chime in, we have, they have it on their plans as 1,200 square feet.
That tall? So.
For existing, John, or proposed?
What I'm looking at is proposed, it's on your plan set, that's what we have is 1,200 square feet.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So that's the second story that we looked at earlier, the floor plan?
Correct.
Mm-hmm. And then the office is about the same size?
The office is about the same size, correct.
So about 1,200 square feet?
Yes. 1,271, yep.
Uh-huh, okay, thank you.
Great, thank you, vice mayor. And I see council member Moore has a hand raised again. Council member Moore, let me, let me ask a quick question. And I believe this would probably be directed to Curtis. Curtis, you had mentioned the 280 bridge. Just to make sure that we're getting the terminology right, or at least I'm getting the terminology right. Is that referring to a bridge between our current trail and the 280 trail?
I meant the 280 trail connection, yeah. If I said bridge, I apologize for that.
Oh, no, I just wanted to make sure we weren't, I, I wasn't visualizing the wrong thing. Okay, okay. Yeah, so, so that just had to do with the, the improvements that you're making for the interconnection? So let's go back to council member Moore.
Okay, thank you, mayor Paul. A quick question for the city attorney. Is there any peril in this reduction in the size of the unit? From going from the four-bedroom from Housing Accountability Act in, in any way, shape or form? Because you are reducing the amount of residential.
No, I don't think so.
Okay, and then the second is, on the public storage project, we requested that there would be MERV 13 or better air filtration provided due to the proximity to the, the 280. And in, in this situation, you actually have the 280 and the SR-85 interchange in, in close proximity. Is that something, well, I can ask for this while we're deliberating, but is this something that could be considered? I did notice that there was a paragraph at least on taking care of the noise and ensuring that there would be a certain decibel level. I'd like to see if the air quality could be considered for the manager unit.
I believe it would be within council's discretion to address, address that issue in its deliberation.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, mayor Paul.
Okay, thank you, council member Moore. At this point, seeing no further hands raised from council, I will ask that someone make the following motion. Moving that the city council first find that the project is exempt from CEQA to adopting resolution number 22-018 approving the development permit DP-2019-05. Three, opting resolution number 22-019 approving the architectural and site approval ASA-2019-05. Four, adopting resolution number 22-020 approving the fence exception EXC-2019-04. And five, adopting resolution number 22-021 approving the tree removal permit TR-2019-048. With a question to staff, I believe that there was a desk item changing one portion of a resolution. So the question first is which resolution that pertains to?
John Martier, yes, that would be attachment A draft resolution for the development permit, condition number 11.
Okay, so I'm assuming that that would be in order of the resolution, so that should be number 22-018. Are there any other desk items that modified any of the other resolutions, including this one?
Uh, no, not currently.
Okay, okay, so without one modification, would anyone like to bring forth the motion for the purposes of deliberation and perhaps a subsequent vote? Council member Moore?
So moved. However, I would like to make a friendly amendment that the condition that the manager's unit have MERV 13 or better air filtration provided.
Okay, well, it's your motion, so you don't need to make a friendly amendment at this point.
Thank you. Okay, so I.
So you'll, you'll move that as stated by myself and requiring that MERV 13 filters be used in the manager's unit, habitable, habitation unit? And so council member Willie, would you like to second the motion?
Yeah, I think this is good, thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you for that second. And I don't see further hands raised at this point. I think that the questions were quite comprehensive. I thank the applicant for its care in this years-long process. It seems like we're putting forward some good, good features to the community as well. I see council member Wei with a hand raised, council member Wei?
Thank you, mayor Paul. I have a question on the motion. Does the air filter just for the residential unit upstairs or does it include the office downstairs too?
That's a good question, council member Wei. Council member Moore, did you mean to encompass both the office unit downstairs as well as the residential unit upstairs?
I would like to accept that as a friendly amendment. I hadn't included it, but I, I think it's a great idea because people will be in that, in space for an extended period of time. And they are adjacent to one another. So I, I think it would make a great friendly amendment. If council member Wei would like to, to do that, I would accept it.
Sure, I would do that.
And council member Willie, would you agree to that as the second?
Absolutely.
Okay, excellent. Well, thank you very much. Let's go ahead and conclude this item. Madam city clerk, would you please conduct the roll call vote?
Council member Moore?
Aye.
Council member Wei?
Aye.
Council member Willie?
Aye.
Vice mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Great, thank you very much, madam city clerk. Let's go on to the next item. I'm sorry, who's speaking there?
I was saying, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Oh, you are, thank you. Very good, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Curtis, thank you, Todd, thank you, Marcelo and, yeah, and Terry and any other members of the applicant. Yeah, congratulations, we're all development, so easy to pass through. But of course, you can't have that location in every single place in our city, so.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Absolutely. Okay, so we're on to item number 16. Item 16 falls under ordinances and action items. And this would be a prospective action item. The subject is our athletic field use policy update. I believe that we have our director of recreation and community services here, but let me hand it over to our city manager. Jim, would you like to introduce the presenter for the staff presentation on this item?
Yes, thank, thank you, mayor and council. So Joanne, our director of Parks and Recreation will be handling this one for us tonight. So I'll hand it off to her.
Great, I'm just going to share my screen. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Great, thank you. Hopefully, everybody can see that. Okay, so good evening, honorable mayor and members of the city council. My name is Joanne McGreeney, I'm a director of Parks and Recreation. And tonight I will be presenting you with a six-month update on the athletic field use policy. Here is the agenda for tonight's presentation. We will be reviewing the history on field use policy updates, extended usage suggestions, a variety of data that was collected during the fall 2021 season, possible simplifications to the policy, updates to the website and signage, and finally, the recommended action. The original policy was approved by city council in 2004. And in fiscal year 2019, 2020, the city work program item with the objective of assessing the current athletic field use policy was initiated. The proposed updates to the policy were presented to the Parks and Recreation Commission in April 2021 for review and input. On May the 4th, 2021, city council considered and approved the proposed adjustments, but with two minor amendments. The new policy went into effect on July 1st, 2021, and then was revisited by the city council on September 21st, 2021. At that meeting, the city council directed staff to provide a six-month report to council with extended usage suggestions, include four-month data, I'm sorry, include four-month input usage data, make suggestions for simplification, and bring back a presentation to the city council at the, the second meeting in January. Staff does not recommend any changes to the field use policy at this time. A majority of feedback from youth sports organization as it relates to the extended usage has been favorable. The current policy allows adequate time for the public to use the fields, including the city's high-usage fields at Creekside and Wilson Parks. Staff recommends to reassess the policy after the spring 2022 season, allowing for a full year of data collection and feedback from the public and youth sports organizations. As depicted in this slide, overall site use was lower than expected, giving the public ample time to utilize the fields. The fall 2021 season, youth sports organizations only expended approximately 19% of the available field hours. Spring, being the more popular season, is only anticipated to expend approximately 30% of the available field, field hours. This trend continued for Sunday play with only a fraction of available time reserved by youth sports organizations. This, this slide lays out Sunday usage per site for the fall 2021 season. The current version of the field user policy, field use policy allows for two Sunday tournaments per year, per group. A tournament is defined, defined as at least three teams all participating in a sport or game. Additionally, organizations may request two Sunday field permits per year for games or practice. A game or practice is defined, defined as a maximum of two teams participating in a sport. Financially, fiscal year 21, 22 has been on trend with pre-pandemic numbers. Two new youth sports organizations have added this, have been added this fiscal year, increasing revenue accordingly. Projected revenue for the fiscal year 22, 23 is a best guess based on actuals from fall 2021 and projections for spring 2022. This slide provides an overall particip, this slide provides a look at overall participation per sport in relation to the number of fields available. The field use policy allows for play on 13 park fields and 14 school site fields. Soccer fields are the most plentiful, although the participation numbers for soccer are the highest of all the offered sports. Based on feedback, there have, there has been confusion over Sunday play, specifically as it relates to the provision that any given field site cannot be used for more than 10 Sundays per fiscal year. Removing this clause from the policy may simplify the terms of Sunday play. Sunday play will continue to be tracked at each site for spring 2022. With the current information, adopting a handful of minor changes to the verbiage in the policy may simplify and provide clarity. However, staff still recommends revisiting and making changes to the policy after a full year of data is collected. Since September of 2021, the city's field, athletic field use website has been updated to be as user-friendly as possible. Usage calendars are not, now displayed per site, making it easier for all users to determine whether use is permitted. There is also a frequently asked questions section that includes information, information such as how to reserve a field, how to report unauthorized use, and information regarding the drought. Additionally, staff is working with the public works department to place new permanent signage at all city fields, including field use throughout, through the joint use agreement with Cupertino Union School District. Signs include a QR code that takes you to the athletic field use webpage and information on how to report unauthorized use. The recommended action for this item is to receive an update on the athletic field use policy and provide direction on next steps. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you very much, Director McGreeney. We'll go ahead for our practice here to open this up to members of the public before our council asks questions. And so let's go ahead and bring it to the public. We have two hands raised right now. They're from Nivedita Methan and Hemant Buch. And so I'll go ahead and reiterate, public speakers, you'll have up to three minutes to speak. You'll need to have your hand raised by the time the first speaker is done. And so by the time Nivedita is done, please have your hand raised if you wish to speak on this item 16. We'll go ahead and start the clock for Nivedita, welcome.
Hi, my name is Manav and I'm 10 years old. We have a school, we have school all week and it would be great if we could, we, we can be allowed to play cricket on Sundays.
Hi, I'm Nivedita and that was my son you were listening to. He's 10-year-old and along with a bunch of kids, he plays cricket on the fields on Sundays. And we would really love it if you can let the fields be open on Sundays. The data that you showed was really amazing, thank you for that. But it, you have to take it into account that it was COVID and during COVID season, this data really is redundant. Because you give them another, I mean, if you are going to continue with the data collection process, it would be nice if you can see that, you know, in the next six months, this field is always going to be used every Sunday, at least, you know, for cricket by the C C Association. And so we motioned to keep the fields open on Sundays, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you very much. And I have, I, I, I have two additional hands raised right now. And actually, one more that just came in that actually was raised and then came down and is raised again. So that's Hemant Buch, someone named Mohak, and Ashrith Chinam. And so Hemant, welcome. As promised, here's your opportunity.
Okay. I, I think I saw the data. One point I want to clarify is that, you know, one comment that was made by Joanne that not all Sundays are utilized. But the thing is for cricket. that not all Sundays are utilized, but the thing is, for cricket, there were, for our organization, there were two Sundays and two tournament. I have only one Sunday left, so I have to be very juicy about it, and I have time till July. So I think that information is a little bit not quite, quite right. So I just wanted to clarify that, that this time is till July and it's not over. So, and we only have one more Sunday between now and July, which is totally, totally unacceptable for our group at this point. So, second thing is, I think also, you know, CCA must have spent a lot of money on that field, and also, every year, we spend a lot of money to update the carpet and other pitch areas. So on top of that, I really request that you keep the fees to whatever is there now and not increase. So that will also really help. And third thing is, most, more importantly, is increase the Sunday usage, because as you all know, we only have one facility, because it needs a central pitch. So I don't know who are being surveyed. Nobody has asked us, because our feedback is quite consistent from the day one. So just talking to one group or two groups, or maybe three groups, but I don't think anybody has approached us, because they have heard the same thing, and when we talk to the staff, we are told, oh, it's not our decision, it's council decision. But what I'm hearing from this presentation is continuously staff recommendation, staff recommendation. So I'm not sure, you know, is it really the council call? And I hope if it is, then council makes the right call to accommodate the population need here that is really loud and clear to all of you. So I really want to look forward to some positive outcome this time. We can't be just keep pushing six months, six months every time. So we want to, and this is the only sports right now, which is the team sports. Kids can get out of their house and not get on the, you know, computer games or something. Keeping them healthy and let's not push them back to unhealthy habits. Thank you. Okay, bye.
Thank you, Hemant. Our next speaker is Mohak, followed by Ashrith Chinam. I do see Shiva K with a hand raised again, and I'll call on Shiva, because that hand was raised at the very beginning, and Shiva will be our last speaker. Mohak, welcome.
Hello. Yeah, so I would just, I was a part of the CCA Academy, and now I am a coach. I am 22 years old, and I stopped when I was 17, because that's the age limit of the academy. And I was part of it for about 10 to 12 years preceding that. And so, yeah, honestly, cricket at the library field was a big part of my childhood, and I know that it was pretty instrumental to my growth as a kid. It's where I made most of my friends outside of school. And just given the circumstances of COVID and how kids have been locked up, or not locked up, but they've been sort of locked in their houses and not really had much exposure socially and not been allowed to play outdoors, I think it is instrumental for their growth to allow them to sort of play on Sundays. Also, you know, cricket only really has one field in Cupertino. And so, the Cupertino library field is really the only place where these guys have an opportunity to do that. And so, I just want to advocate for the availability of the ground, because I'm, having experienced it myself, I know it's really big for all these kids.
Great, thank you very much, Mohak. Our next speaker is Ashrith. Welcome.
Hi, I'm 13 years old, and yeah, I go to CCA too, and like, I like to play cricket with my friends, and especially in the pandemic, to be outside, and I just want the field open like, one day, one or two days a week, because we have five days of school, right? And I just want the field to be open so that we can have some fun with my friends. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, this is Shobhan Chinam, Ashrith's dad. It has been very hard for the kids to be, go out and play, and having a place like Cupertino Field where they can go out and play, especially during this pandemic times, and also creating the good habits, avoid being on the screen time. So much screen time we have, we have been having last two years. So this is one place where they can get out and enjoy some fresh air and also meet other people. Of course, we follow all the social distancing norms, but this is very, very critical for young families like us, to be allow the kids to go and play out there. Because this is, we are, I mean, the kids are having a lot of emotional challenges, being unable to meet with their friends or go out and play. So this is very, very important for families like us with kids. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next and final speaker is Shiva K. Welcome, Shiva.
Hey, hi. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you all the board members, you know, for giving a chance to speak with all of you. And I know, and I'm the lucky, you're given the chance for the last speaker too. And so, we, all our kids will study in this Cupertino School District, and as just now spoken by Ashrith. So where my kid will, you know, play with, along with Ashrith. So even though, so he is like, so my kid is just a, is a fourth grade, where Ashrith is seventh grade. So this is the only platform, is a sport, is a platform where, where kids, younger kids can meet older kids, and they can guide younger kids. So my kid is learning so many things from this, you know, elder kids. I feel like, so this is the only cricket, the field library, which you give in the stadium, or ground field is connecting dots from one place to another place. So I request all of you, you know, please consider, give a chance to play on Sunday. So where like my younger kids will grow up by learning from the older kids and with the, from the coaches, and just like having a, and also cricket is the most upcoming, growing game in the USA. So I feel like this is one of the best opportunities if you give, for the Cupertino kids and all of the kids. Thank you so much.
Thanks very much, Shiva, and that is our last speaker from the public. I'll go ahead and bring this back to council, and so, council, if we have questions at this point prior to bringing a motion, I see Councilmember Moore has a hand raised, and so, Councilmember Moore, if you have any questions of staff with regard to this item?
I do. Thank you, Mayor. Really quick, I'm just curious how long a cricket match is for like a U-12 player, including the warm-up time, and it might be that we perhaps need to ask Hemant if he could provide that information? And how many matches are they able to hold on a Saturday in a row on that, on the library field? That's my first question. And then, there was a table, which I could not find in the, in the presentations and the, and in the online, in the agenda packet. It showed the force recreation separated out from Deansa Youth Soccer League. And I think I can take that quest, perhaps take it offline, but I just want to make sure that there aren't force players who are, their coaches permitting still under DYSL if force recreation is the youngers, which was something that I had, I had run that years ago, and they would have really high residency. So I'm kind of curious how they've mixed that in. But if we can have that table, or if you, if you know where it is in the packet, then just point it out to me, but I couldn't find it. Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Moore. And did staff want to follow up on that request in terms of the location of the table?
Yeah, let me look for that, and I'll get back to you.
Okay, great.
And Mayor Paul, you heard the first, the first question for how long are those cricket matches? And how many, how many teams can they get through on a Saturday?
Great. And so, Joanne, did you have some visibility into Councilmember Moore's first couple of questions with regard to the duration of the cricket matches?
So I would certainly defer to the cricket experts in this category, but I have heard that they could go anywhere from two to as long as four hours, depending. Some games go longer. I'm not certain on all of the rules associated, especially for the different ages. Sometimes there are time limits for certain age groups for certain games, so I don't know all the particulars.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and reopen this to a member of the public. I know a coordinator of CCA, Hemant Butch, is requesting to speak with a hand raised. And Hemant, did you want to speak to Councilmember Moore's questions regarding the duration of your matches?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Moore. So I think the practices that we do on weekdays about two hours, but the game for under 12, under 13, those two groups, 10 and under 12, those two groups generally played, library, probably under 13 sometimes. It goes about five hours, four to five hours with setup and everything. So it's kind of, unless we start at eight o'clock, which, you know, the field don't open that early, and it's not also very safe that early, because it is wet. We try to squeeze in during the tournament, two games, by lowering the hours in a day, but it's not always possible to have that, to squeeze in two games in a day for cricket game.
Okay, thank you, Hemant. And so, let me bring it back to council. And Councilmember Moore, I assume that your first couple of questions were answered. Director McGreeney, did you, were you able to locate that resource requested?
So yeah, I think that DYSL is in a couple of our charts and attachments and the staff report, so we're just trying to figure out exactly, specifically what you're looking for, but wanted to mention that DYSL has been booking field use, but force has not.
Okay, very good. Let's go on to Vice Mayor Chow.
Hi. So I have a question regarding the usage table. Thank you so much for all this data. It's really great. So here by participant, do you mean that it's a day of reservation for a team?
No, that in particular refers to how many participants were registered for that particular sport that year. So, and includes residents and non-residents.
Okay, so for example, I would like to figure out, like baseball, we have potentially 11 field. Then 11 times 365 will be about 4,000 days. And how many of those days are reserved for sport? Do we have that number?
So I did pull the usage data for Sundays in particular. I can certainly gather that data for a future update.
Okay, because you mentioned earlier that one of the sport is 35% usage, and the other, I forgot about that.
So that was, yeah, that was in reference to the season. So overall, this fall season, all the sports fields were only utilized 19% of the time that they were available for the public. So all of the fields that we were, that are allowable to be used were only utilized 19%. They're anticipated to be utilized 32% for the spring. Spring is a much more popular season for sports than the fall.
So like, we have a 20 soccer field, and then, so the usage level for soccer is about 19%? For baseball is also about 19%?
We just did an overall number. We didn't break it down per field. And there was a lot of data collection and analyzing for this particular item. And so, you know, I can further analyze the data for a future update, however you direct.
It seems we do need more cricket field. Just one seems to be not sufficient. And I want, I checked that, this is a field that's built by Fremont City. It's a shared field, cricket in the middle, and they have two soccer field on the side. And I've seen another composition where they have cricket field overlapping with the baseball field, because both are about the same shape. And then they have the cricket, the pitch is at the outer field, so it does, it doesn't interfere with the baseball. So maybe that we should consider that, since we have plenty of baseball and soccer, and maybe that's something we can consider so that, because the problem with library field is, besides the field, there is no other recreational area for the residents to use. And residents work during the day too, so they would like a Sunday to relax in a park. But the other field, usually, they have the game, the soccer field, but also other playground, other rest areas for the residents. So they are not just a park with only sports field. So that's why library field is a very challenging issue if we allow more Sunday use. But we should explore other options.
Yeah, I did want to just mention that Collins Elementary does have a hitting bay that is utilized by the academy, and that games are scheduled at Homestead as well. So they do utilize other facilities in Cupertino.
Okay, yep, thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. Thank you, Director McGreeney. Let's go on to Councilmember Way.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. I have two quick questions. I don't like to get quick answers. One is for Joanne, is I believe we're looking at Sunday plays at the library field, because it seems that cricket is, can only use that field, and that's the issue that we're looking at. So are all the Sundays available on the, on the library field being used? That's my first question. My second question is for Hemant, is, you know, we need to balance the residential use for the neighborhood, and also, I understand cricket is in library field, that because of the facility for the tournament. How, you say you've been, trying to reserve your games because of the limited availability for you to reserve library field. What would be in, how much, what would be an ideal Sunday that you need? What, what, what would, what do you really need? That's what I like to find.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Way. Let's start with the question directed to Joanne. And so, Joanne, did you want to speak to Councilmember Way's initial question?
Yeah, absolutely. So currently, library field is currently only permitted to the Cricket Academy. There are no other reservations on that field. And I would like to just point out, when we did do research and analysis, when we brought this item to the Park and Rec Commission, prior to bringing it for your consideration when it was adopted, staff did recommend four Sundays for games and practices. Park and Rec Commission recommended two Sundays instead of four for all of the youth sports organizations, and so, we landed on the two additional Sundays for practices and games.
Yep, thank you, both Joanne and Councilmember Way. Let's go to our member of the public identified by Councilmember Way for a question. Hemant, there was a question with regard to the number of preferred Sundays.
Thanks, Mayor Paul, and thanks, Councilmember Way, and thanks, Joanne, for clarification. I think ideally, and to be considerate of the community, as you mentioned, and we are all part of it, so we need to work together with everyone. I would say at least if we get two Sundays a month, that will clear a lot of backlog for us. So if we get two Sundays a month, ideally, that would be, that would be the ideal one for us. Because right now, I only one Sunday left, you know, till July to use. So you can imagine that, you know, that's like nothing.
Okay, thank you. And Councilmember Way, did you have anything further at this time?
Yes, can I follow up with a question with Hemant? Is, I know the idea is two Sundays a month. Is it all year round? Or there a season? Is it, is there difference between which quarter, which month?
I would say we will follow the city, I mean, park requirement for field closure. But if that's not the case, then But if that's not the case, then at least from April till November, we would like that.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite get the month.
Till April, from April till November, we would like to have at least two Sundays a month.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you Councilmember Wei. At this time, let me check in with Councilmember Willie, did you have any questions, Councilmember Willie?
Maybe one, just so I kind of have an overall understanding. We're talking about Sundays but not Saturdays. What is the Saturday usage? Or is there no Saturday usage?
Okay, thank you Councilmember Willie. Director McGreeeny, did you want to speak to Councilmember Willie's question on Saturday usage?
I will have to look that up specifically. I don't have those numbers available to me right now.
But.
I believe that they've reserved pretty much every Saturday that is available to them, so I think they're using it on a regular basis, but I can do a little bit more research.
Okay, great, thank you very much. And so let me go back to Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Moore, did you have any questions and follow up at this time? Or did you want to bring forward a motion for us to conduct deliberation at this time?
I have another question for Joanne. Could you please clarify how many Sundays California Cricket Academy has currently? And I just am noticing, you know, for a lot of the year, there are only four Sundays a month, so asking for two is a lot. So yeah, so how many do they have currently?
So for the fall season, they used two, I believe, two of their tournament Sundays and one game Sunday. And so for the rest of the spring season, they only have one game Sunday available to them. There is something else that I'd like to mention for your consideration as well. We do have another cricket team interested in utilizing the field. And so I would just take that into consideration as well, that this is not, this would not maybe affect just one group. So just wanted to throw that out there, that we have gotten inquiries from other groups about utilizing our field.
Is this also to play cricket?
Correct, for cricket.
Okay, and do you have requests for volleyball at this location as well? Are there competing sports?
We do, we do have occasion to have that, but right now they're permitted at another field. So it just is a matter of, you know, what other groups are interested in using it and we go through the prioritization process.
Okay, and I did look up the, there's like 13 fields list shown on the Cal Cricket website. I did see the Homestead High School location. I'm curious what the cost differences, and this might, this is Hammond's question, what's the cost difference if they were to book Homestead High School versus permitting in at Cupertino? If, through the mayor, if he could respond to that.
Sure. So Hammond, there's an impending, there's a pending question as well as perhaps you wanted to follow up on the Saturday usage question as well.
Okay, so I think Saturday, every Saturday we have full use of the field. Actually, every weekday also we have booked in the spring. In the fall, it's difficult because of daylight saving issue. And we have fully utilized all Sundays that are possible, only four, I guess. So regarding Homestead, you know, it's a Sunday, there is no pitch there, it's just an artificial turf. So very small kids with mostly tennis ball, we try to play or hardball, but very small kids we take. But now that, you know, that facility or that surface is not good for cricket, so we have kind of stopped going there because it's, you know, ball doesn't bounce at all because it's a rubber tire, you know, there are elements that are there underneath. So underneath is not a clay surface, so it's not usable much, so nobody really wants to use it. So it's really back to library unfortunately.
Through the mayor, a quick question and thank you Hammond. Do you, after seeing the image that the Vice Mayor presented of the combination field and it looked like a turfed field, a fake turf field, do you prefer the grass fields for play over the artificial turf? Is that what you're saying?
Hammond, I think that question was directed to you. I believe you're still unmuted.
Oh, okay. So I think the question is, do we, no, artificial field is fine, the Fremont field is also artificial, but in the center between the two baseball or two soccer field, they have put a turf pitch, which is, you know, similar to library field. So that is what I think they have done, so that's being used for multi-purpose really in true sense. So if we can achieve something like that, you know, I tried to work with the DNC and other places, but we couldn't find the right size field.
Thank you Hammond, thank you Mayor Paul.
All right, thank you. Let's go back to Vice Mayor Chow with a hand raised.
So I'm wondering, how is, how about the other fields? I think beside, I think Luther just have a new field built and the other fields around our area, do they also allow Sunday use or not? I know that the city didn't have, didn't allow any Sunday use for games before, and then we changed that earlier last year to allow some. So apparently maybe two is not enough for cricket and then that's why we proposed to reconsider that last winter to say maybe we would consider four, special case for cricket, the other games are still two. And so I wonder whether Sunday is, only Cupertino doesn't have limitation or doesn't allow. How about other cities or school districts?
Thank you Vice Mayor. If anyone has that knowledge, please feel free. I do see the member of the public, Hammond, with a hand raised. And so Hammond, please feel free to speak to that if you would like.
Yeah, so I think school district at this time is allowing the use. So we are trying to use Luther because we, as you all know, we spent over $200,000 to, you know, rebuild that field so for our use. So we have a little bit of, you know, use on weekend also, both weekend.
Okay, great. Anything else Vice Mayor?
Could I ask, did you evaluate whether it's possible to convert some baseball field to cricket field?
I can, we can do more study, we have tried that, but within Cupertino City, we have not found any like that. But, you know, the San Jose, neighboring San Jose City, there are some areas that we think are there. Some high school fields probably are big enough for that also. But there are a lot of high school sports happening, so I'm not sure it will be feasible. But, you know, we are always open to talk to different groups. And, you know, by the way, Joanne and her staff are extremely supportive in hearing us out and all, but it's just that, you know, it's difficult, I know, understand that it's difficult to find a space in this area for everyone.
Okay, well, Vice Mayor, your hand is still raised, did you have follow up at this time?
No.
Councilmember Wei?
Yes, I actually like to make brief answer to Vice Mayor Chow's question, when this high school district will be modeling all our five high schools fields, you know, the cricket county did approach us, it's just the cricket takes so much space that the, if we have a cricket field, it could accommodate soccer, baseball, but with soccer, baseball, you cannot accommodate a cricket field. And our schools, at that time when I was a board member, our field size were so limited that we couldn't accommodate a cricket, a design to include the cricket. So it's not the baseball, soccer are issues, it's the cricket fields that needs a big space, that's the issue, and Cupertino just does not have that big of a space to accommodate a cricket field. I couldn't, if we could, that would be great.
Thank you Councilmember Wei, Councilmember Willie?
Yeah, I'm still real focused on the participation versus field chart, you know, where it says baseball has three dedicated, eight multipurpose and 228 participants going back to 2019. And then cricket only has one and yet it had 82 participants. It just kind of seems, you know, out of balance. I would think that Parks and Rec would need to be the one to tell us, is baseball having more games or are the fields just not being used relatively the same amount? Because if you've got 11 fields and 228 players and one field and 82 players, I just, I struggle with what those numbers are reflecting. Same thing with softball, two fields, volleyball, one field. And then soccer, 12 dedicated multipurpose. And so it just seems to me that there's, on paper, there's room to improve the field count. I hear that the issue of field size, how many acres is library field versus the fields at our other parks? And that bigger picture, I think, is what I would need to, to hopefully get more equity and to hopefully get as much usage of the fields by our youth and our families as possible, not holding back, so.
Okay, thank you for the question, Councilmember Willie. Did anyone from staff want to speak to that?
Yeah, sorry, I'm trying to multitask and I am kind of losing focus here, so my apologies. But I just, I want to reiterate what Hammond has already mentioned. It's not necessarily the field space, it's the size of the field and how it's laid out in proximity for usage of cricket. So I don't think that anyone's in disagreement that we certainly could use more cricket fields, it's just finding the space that would appropriately accommodate that. The other thing that I think that we have done since instituting the new policy is we have communicated better to both the community as well as the youth sports organizations when those fields are available to them. And so I think through our signage and through our website and the calendaring particular to each field, the community can see when it's more readily available to them and that was not possible with the former policy. So I think we have made huge strides there.
Okay, thank you Joanne. And so let's go back to Vice Mayor Chow. Vice Mayor, do you have a question at this time or can we entertain a motion on this?
I have a question, yeah.
Okay.
So here is a baseball, shared with cricket, you can see the pitch there and that's the field. And then here I see Wilson Park. It seems to be very big, why is it not possible to install a pitch here and we have all that space? So I don't know, I'm just curious.
So I think it's that it's narrow, I think the length is appropriate as far as the spacing, but the width is not appropriate because with cricket, you can hit in any direction and so it's not just in one direction. So the pitch really needs to be more in the middle of the field, at least that's my understanding. I could be corrected, but unfortunately, there is pathway in between those fields, the two baseball field sites. So I think that's been actually looked at and vetted by staff previously.
Oh, so this is also not feasible?
That's my understanding.
Okay, thank you. So I am, so can we make a motion to modify the, I understand the staff recommendation is to not change anything right now and let's do it a year later. So can we still make a motion to change the Sunday games today?
You can provide staff direction under, under the noticed agenda item. So what do you have in mind? Well, before you, before you propose something, let me go to Councilmember Moore to see if there are any other questions at this time. Councilmember Moore, did you have a question or can we go back to Vice Mayor Chow to start us off on a motion?
Okay, thank you Mayor Paul. The recommended action is to receive an update on the athletic use policy and provide direction on next steps. When we are veer into discussing whether or not Wilson would be used for cricket and that's a baseball field and knowing that I did not hear anyone from the baseball community on the line and I'm not sure that, that what we have noticed would have allowed them the opportunity or give them a heads up, as it were, that they need to be advocating for their field space and time. And so I'm concerned about that and because I don't really feel that that was, that it was noticed that way, maybe others feel differently. Also for, with regards to changing the amount of field use at library field on Sundays, I'm a little bit concerned that I also did not hear from members of the public who go out with their dogs, go eat, go have picnics there. And so I'm a little bit concerned that if a motion is entered to change the field use on Sunday, that we perhaps didn't notice it that way, but I guess I would let the city attorney weigh in to see if that's true or not.
Okay, great. I'll take that as a question directed towards our city attorney, Chris. What do you think that the scope of our direction can be at this point?
So Councilmember Moore has a good point, that the agenda, the agenda description doesn't explicitly call out changes to the policy. So I think staff, council could give staff direction to come, to provide more information, to come back with specific changes to policy, to have a proposal to increase or change limits on Sunday use. But I do think she has, Councilmember Moore does have a good point that, that changes to the policy are outside of the scope of the recommended action. And so, you know, that might be more clear for other users as to whether those changes are going to take place in future agendas.
Okay, well, thank you for that. I see a hand raised from Councilmember Wei. Councilmember Wei, did you have another question prior to?
Yes, I do. I do know that we are accepting reports and this is a six months report. And I noticed that there was, there is one recommendation from the staff that's to eliminate Sunday play limits. And so what we're thinking is if we instruct or give, or give the staff to maybe do a tri, we comment a tri period for cricket to have more Sunday plays and for six months and see if we have any complaints or, you know, how would that work?
You know, I'll take that as a question of our city attorney. I'm actually pulling the staff report right now to see what we can, I mean, I will note that this falls under ordinances and action items and so taking some kind of action shouldn't come as.
Through the mayor, if I might be. For the mayor, if I might be able to clarify, the recommendation, yeah, the recommendation for staff would be to eliminate the ten. Uses per site language out of the policy. So we wouldn't monitor that, but it would still be the four Sunday uses. Per organization, per fiscal year. So I think that's where there's been a lot of. Miscommunication. And so when we do update the policy, if that, you know, is, you know, at the end of the year mark, we would recommend that that be removed. To provide, you know, further clarity. The other thing I wanted to mention, Councilmember Moore, I think we have found what you're looking for in the many attachments. And so I believe it is attachment. C in the field permit schedule for August twenty twenty one.
Okay. Councilmember Way, do you feel like your question has been answered at this point?
Yes, I do. So now I know the issues. Now I know the issues. It's not how many Sunday morning plays per field. It's actually the limit of two Sundays for each. Group that's that's the Cricket Academy is probably seeking to to increase.
Increase, yeah. Okay, let me take it back to Vice Mayor Chow. Vice Mayor Chow, you had indicated that you were interested in bringing forth a motion at this time.
I wonder if it's allowed still. I think the subject is. Athletic field policy update in eliciting the agenda, but it is under ordinances and action items. I know that staff recommendation is not to change the policy at least this time and wait until one full year. And I think when it was on the council last time, I was hoping already. To give the Cricket Academy more Sundays, but there were no public comments at that time and then. The staff said, okay, let's wait and see. So I think we have half a year. Could we still propose a pilot of maybe six Sundays for Cricket Academy in. In a year. So but then six months left, that will be like five Sundays.
City Attorney Jensen?
I guess question, could we propose a pilot for the next six months so that we can have some result? Then if the residents feel they are disturbed by this presence, maybe then we can. We would have some feedback on how we would adjust the policy.
Chris, you have your hand raised. Do you want to speak to that question?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I I so. I I do agree that the subject of the item is athletic field use policy update. So I I I think. It considered as a whole that that meets that the the minimum requires requirement for notice if council wishes to. To 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 propose pilot or other such changes to the policy over the next six months. And and then I think it's 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 within council's discretion to decide whether to do that or whether to make sure that, you know, there's. Outreach to other groups before that's done.
Yeah, I'm I'm gonna go ahead and interject here at this time. You you know, I I think it would be a better idea to. As was recommended in the staff presentation provided by Joanne. There's a reassessment of Sunday use following the spring twenty twenty two. A season recommended and, you know, I'm taking that recommendation in conjunction with the comment made by. Hemant from from Public and from CCA requesting, you know, more usage between the April to November timeframe. I I I know that April is not going to make it in time for an assessment of the spring twenty twenty two season, but. I I do think that perhaps during the summer break months of June, July and August, it may not be unreasonable. And so if we're assessing spring twenty twenty two. Joanne, what does spring twenty twenty two go up until? Is that basically the end of May or June or what is that considered?
It can, it coincides with the fiscal year. So June thirtieth would be the last day.
Okay, so it goes to the end of the year. Yeah, so that that may not be in time to really kind of speak to the summer months. Right? All the summer months at least, June, July and August. But but I, you know, I I think we could potentially, could you think you could potentially bring it back in? In in May, in the first meeting in May, or would that be? Oh, and and I should say, you know, I I realize this is commentary, but I know a lot of work has gone into it and. You know, thank you for, you know, doing that follow up work. It's really good data to see. But do you think May would be too early to, you know, come up with an assessment as to whether the summer months perhaps could be provided? In terms of the request for a couple of Sundays a month?
So July and August were actually provided in the fall portion of the statistics. So it would just be. You know, May and June would be the months in the spring that we would be bringing back to you. And as far as cricket specific use. Of Sundays, they're only allowed one more Sunday use of the total of four. So they've used three. They have one left for.
Before the end of the fiscal year, right?
Right, yeah.
Okay. Okay, well, let me go on and, you know, Vice Mayor Chow, your hand is still raised. Councilmember Moore has has a hand raised and so. You know, I I do have the original proposal for a motion, but I didn't really hear one, you know, specifically forthcoming. Vice Mayor Chow, if you wanted to bring something forward for discussion purposes.
Yeah, I'll. Okay, I'll try a motion because I think with only one Sunday left, we really can, don't even see any effect. In a few months, then what's the point? Right? If we want to see what's the impact, then we need to pilot something so that we know what will be the impact if we have more Sundays with games. So I would like to propose, I would like to make a motion that we. I guess for the remaining of the year until June thirtieth. We allow. Say one per month. So. Some maybe five more. So that that would be a six, six total. So I I'd like to pilot a program that will allow them six Sunday games a year. And then in, then we will see whether that we might get complaints from residents and then we could make an adjustment then.
Can you put that into a motion? The the unclarity I have is whether this would apply just to one organization or to the entirety of. The potential applicant pool for all, you know, potential people asking for Sunday usage of fields. So aside me, I that 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 really wasn't in the form of a motion unless you're saying specifically you want to provide this one organization extra Sundays. But that would be inconsistent with the rest of the policy, right? Yeah, I I I realize, you know, the the quandary, right? You kind of have to think that through when it becomes, you know, sort of a policy level deal. But well, let me, let me do this. Is there a second to this potential motion once I ask Vice Mayor Chow to? Provide that clarification. Councilmember Willie, are you looking to?
Okay, yes, I I would second that.
Okay, so Councilmember Willie, Vice Mayor Chow has language up on the screen right now. Stating, I moved pilot program to allow up to six Sunday games for cricket games since we have only one cricket. I, you know, I I would, yeah, keep the justification for it out of the motion, but it it's your motion.
I I would think we need to say one per month.
Oh, would you like one per month?
Yeah. So the community then conceivably has three weekends a month or volleyball stuff as opposed to six and then they. Use all four Sundays in the month of April.
So that applies to all field or only the library field?
I think your motion is pertaining to library field. I I think we need the community to be driving this and right now we have the cricket group. Which it seems to be inequitable with only one field. And they're asking to increase their. Usage. And so that moves them up more equitable, equil- equilobly. With respect to soccer, baseball. And then volleyball and softball also have the option to come back and tell us that they feel. The need also if they do.
Okay, so let me see if I'm clarifying this correctly. So you're moving the staff recommendation. With the modification that's shown on the screen. Is that correct? Vice Mayor Chow?
The staff recommendation is not to change anything, right?
Right, with the modification that you are providing here. Right, until until June. All right, fine. So Vice Mayor Chow moves the staff recommendation with a pilot program until June thirtieth. Of this year to allow up to a maximum of one Sunday game per month for library field. And I. Take it that's just for cricket?
One game, I guess, one Sunday game.
Okay, which is the only cricket field in the entire city. Okay, so. So a maximum of one Sunday per month for a library field applicable to any applicant who wants to apply to. Library field, is that correct?
Uh huh, yeah. So anyone who want, if if two cricket teams want to reserve them at most one per month.
Okay. Uh, which is the only cricket field in the entire city. We'll assess the impact to the residents in six months. And so I I take it that staff direction to bring it back to council after the the fiscal year ends to assess the impact to residents. Is that correct? Okay, Councilmember Willie, can you confirm that you're seconding this motion?
Yes, I do.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. I see Councilmember Moore has a hand raised. Vice Mayor Chow, did you want to speak to the motion? Your hand is still raised at this time. Okay, Councilmember Moore? We're now in the deliberative process right now, so.
Sure, so. For for Joanne. So how how many Sunday uses could we ultimately end up with? Because it looks like they're trying to grant. Game use. So one game to me means one five hour session on a Sunday. So that's not not particularly clear to me. So what if they wanted to have a tournament? Are they, do they still have tournaments? Allocated? And then what happens if volleyball wants to use that field on a Sunday? They haven't used it at all. Or, you know, there's there's actually a Harry Potter group. I don't know if they're still around, but maybe they want to use the field. Or the the Frisbee group. So I'm wondering how many, how many field use days could you potentially actually end up with if were this to be followed through with?
I'll I'll open this back up as part of the deliberative process as a reference to council. And so the. The inquiry was to Director McGreevy.
I'm sorry, would you mind repeating the first part of that again?
How many possible Sundays are we talking about if this is implemented?
So so there, I'm sorry, and now I remember exactly what you had asked. The way the permit works is you can permit for the Sunday for the total hours that are available. So you pay by the hour. So if a field permit is available at ten AM, you can go until four PM, just based on the number of hours. And you can have multiple games on that day. So for the use of the Sundays, I would assume that. Six Sundays would be used utilized by the group one each month. So I would say that the impact at the most would be six Sundays. Which I I don't know if that is in addition to the one that they still have available to them for Sunday use or if we're just going with the flat, they get. You know, six Sundays available.
I I took the Vice Mayor's motion to mean that she was adding five to the one that was still there. Vice Mayor, you can clarify that, but. Kind of following your process.
I think.
Because that comes into play with the group.
More clear. I think my original motion is maximum one game, but I probably should say maximum one Sunday reservation. Which will be for game, tournament or whatever, whoever is still maximum one reservation.
So then currently, the Cricket Academy has one Sunday left available to them in particular. So say another group comes in and wants to permit the field for Sundays, they would technically have four Sundays available to them for the spring. But for a total of six Sundays between the two groups. And there is a prioritization process. And there is a deadline to submit your requests. So that all comes into play, but I think we may need just to clarify a little bit more.
I think we we do mean that although there is only one left for the cricket, they would be allowed to reserve more. As long as there is no more than one per month.
Okay.
The intent. So how do I make it more clear?
I I don't know what you're saying, Vice Mayor Chow. So are you saying that you're trying to provide six opportunities until the end of the fiscal year?
Is that better? So the current limit of two games per year for the cricket use of library field will be waived during the pilot.
Two Sunday reservations for games.
Sunday, oh, two. Two Sunday.
Reservations.
Reservations for games.
Four games, reservations for four. No, no. F O R, yeah. Okay, so I I think that's clear. And then I I wanted to clarify something that I heard Director McGreevy stating. So this contemplated pilot, as you understand it, Joanne, is that it is a total of six Sundays until the end of the fiscal year. So if another, if another cricket group comes in, you are basically consolidating this into six Sundays maximum between now and the end of June, correct? So it's not that each of those groups would get six Sundays. It would just be a total of six Sundays. That's your understanding of this, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so just to just to make that clear, because Director McGreevy indicated that there is possibly another group with interest. Where basically piloting the program where we're setting aside a Sunday a month. That's that's staff's understanding of your motion, Vice Mayor.
Yeah.
Okay, so I see nods from both you and Councilmember Willie. And Councilmember Willie, there have been modifications made to the motion. Can you verbally indicate whether you accept those as the center?
Yes, I accept those. I I would like to just offer a little clarification. So I feel we're talking about cricket use one Sunday a month. If the volleyball group were to come and say that they wanted a volleyball game, that would be on one of the other three Sundays. It would not be in using up the six, any of the six days. For the six months of the cricket use. Again, volleyball would then say, we wanted to have. Again, volleyball would then say, we wanted to have a game on a Sunday, but there's three other Sundays every month that are not designated. So I just want to kind of clarify that.
Yes.
So they're not thinking that.
That's actually not what I meant. I thought if, if cricket, if volleyball also wants to reserve that field, that should be one of the Sunday reservations. So it could be for any sport. So the pilot is that there will be one reservation, whatever sport, per month for the library field. And we are making the exception for library field rather than any other field. It's because this is, is the only cricket field in the city, then there is that demand. So, but that doesn't mean this rule applies only to cricket. I think that's what I mean.
Yeah, you know, I'm, I'm tracking Director McGreeney's facial expression here. And I, I think you've basically kind of hamstrung your own motion, Vice Mayor Chow, respectfully. Because what, what ends up happening, if we follow the descrip- the description you just provided, is that it's possible for cricket to get zero of these reservations between now and the end of the fiscal year. And so I, I think you just need to go with the original intent, um, and, and, and just specify and call out cricket. You know, in, in interest of, uh, of, of trying to, um, you know, keep this focused. Um, you know, once you open it up to other groups, uh, you can upend your, your intention here. So, I mean, if I have a, if I have a volleyball organization, I can go, um, and, and, and try to get these, these six reservations, right? And you're trying to provide an accommodation for cricket. So I, you know, I would just recommend that you, you know, kind of hold back on that, that, that last modification you're making.
Okay.
Okay. Um, okay, I, I have three hands raised. They're from Councilmembers Wei, Willie, and Moore. So we'll go in that order. Hung?
Okay, sorry, got a little technical issue. Okay, so, um, I, I, I do believe we are talking about cricket. And then, uh, my recommendation is, um, as Mayor says, the original one, because here we're trying to accommodate a growing group of demand from our community. We do have a lot of demand from our Indian-American community that cricket is a popular sport and for their use. So I think we're trying to do a pilot program, as Vice Mayor suggested, um, until the end of the, um, December 30th, and so that we can see how the community and the cricket, um, community respond to that. My question is specific for, uh, Command again, that is this something that the Cricket Academy or cricket community is looking for? Is it, if, because if we have a pilot program, it is not exactly what they're looking for. So, and whether it's successful or not, it's not gonna, uh, you know, we're not fulfilling the purpose right here. So my question ac- actually for Hemant, if this something that's his, uh, the Cricket Academy community is looking for?
Uh, 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 okay, um, Councilmember Wei, I, I, I'm, I'm not so sure about the advisability of this, but procedurally, I, I can go ahead and, and open it back up. I, I would just say that in this kind of a situation, y- you know, i- if you're trying to get more usages, I mean, I, I, I think asking that question invites the answer, uh, inevitably that they don't want more, right? I mean, so I'm not really.
All right, I take my question back. I'm just, I'm just trying to get a pilot program that's, that's valuable, that, that, that could.
I, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to open up the hearing again to ask that question, but, I mean, you know, i- if you could maybe reconsider that, because inevitably, we'll get the data back, you know, if this motion does pass. But if you want me to reopen it, I can, I can certainly do that.
You know what, no, on second thought, i- you know, the pilot program could get feedback from both the community and the cricket community. So I think I'm okay with not opening up the, uh.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Wei. Um, let's go on to Councilmember Willie and then Councilmember Moore.
Yeah, so since we're into deliberations, you know, I, I've, I really feel that, uh, we need to make as many, uh, facilities available for the community as possible. We don't want to see, uh, fields overused and turning brown. We, we don't want things to be inequitable. But I think the underlying, uh, uh, impetus should be if there, if there's no impact or no problem, then we should be making more use available as long as the community is driving. We don't want to be, uh, making, um, more reservations out there that are, than are being requested. But here we have something that is being requested, and it sure seems to me that there is, uh, facility availability for all the, uh, participants in the community. So I, I would like to see us give this a try and get feedback, uh, from the community, the Frisbee people, the barbecue people, and the, uh, cricket club. And, and ultimately coming up with the, uh, the best, most equitable situation as we can for our total community. So I'll leave it at that, but I think this has been good.
Okay, Councilmember Willie, Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Paul. I, I have a problem with the processes, I've, uh, already mentioned. Uh, to me, if, uh, the, the field were to be available, which it is, uh, for 10 Sundays for the year, if it turns out that you have one organization which, uh, wants to use it more than others, they, they, you know, they've got their hand up, they want to use it. And, uh, and it's a specialized field with the cricket pitch. They've in, uh, given money in order to, uh, help maintain that space. Um, I would want to see a, kind of a different method of allocating the, the field, the Sunday field use to them as opposed to the, the method that I'm seeing, um, tonight. And, um, I'm bothered by how this, uh, was agendized, um, kind of advertised to the public. And I know that it was a very short meeting when we addressed this topic, uh, months ago. And, uh, and I thought that that was a little bit problematic in this time, because we veered now into, um, how the, the field is going to be used. And the, I don't feel that the neighbors who live around that field were made aware of it. Um, and, and other, um, potential, uh, we're hearing that there's another Cricket, uh, Academy who might want to be using this space. I don't hear, hear their voices. I don't hear the volleyball voices. And, uh, so I, uh, have a problem with how we are going about this, this process tonight. Um, I, I do understand and appreciate that Cal Cricket wants to have a more Sunday time. Um, but I think that, uh, that, that we, we should be doing this with, with better outreach and notification to the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Um, you know, I, I hear all my fellow council members' concerns, um, and I, I, I respect all of them. I will go ahead and support this motion. Um, I, I would like to ask Vice Mayor Chow, uh, to, uh, allow for staff to, uh, adjust the field usage of, uh, library field maximum to 15 as needed, um, because I just want to make sure that we have a consistent policy that, um, as Councilmember Moore just noted, we don't necessarily have, um, it might be exceeding the 10, if I'm understanding, uh, this correctly, because we're adding potentially five more uses of, um, library field. If that's not correct, then, um, please, somebody, uh, indicates so to me. Um, I'll, I'll take a raise of a hand. Um, but Vice Mayor Chow, would you be willing to accept that as a friendly amendment to your motion so that we can have, um, you know, proper administration of our policy?
Okay, so.
Okay, and, uh.
Like this?
Would be adjusted, I think it might be, I see, could be adjusted by staff to 15. Yeah, instead of would, put could.
Be.
Yeah, could be adjusted by staff. I think it should be 15 instead of 12, yeah, 15 uses. Um, Councilmember Willie, will you accept that friendly amendment to the motion?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, uh, Councilmember Moore, you have your hand raised.
Um, what's to prevent the, the organization, um, from requesting three in a month or four in a month? Is there a limitation in this, in this motion?
Yes, there's a maximum of one Sunday reservation per month.
Uh. How's that work with a, with 15 Sunday uses?
It's over the course of the year.
Include, so you're saying that this field, uh, so every other field has a ton, 10 Sunday use maximum, and this one, um, 15?
Yeah, I actually, yeah, thanks for pointing that out. Uh, Vice Mayor Chow, the current limit of max, of the maximum of 10 Sunday uses for library field per year, um, it wouldn't be per field. This doesn't affect every field, it just would affect library field. For library field per year could be adjusted by staff to 15 Sunday uses. That's it, yeah.
Excuse me, Mayor Paul, um, this is a pilot program until, I'm sorry, Mayor Paul?
Until the end of the fiscal year, until June 30th, 2022.
May I ask a question, Mayor Paul?
Uh, yes, no, we're, we're in deliberation here, so please feel free.
Okay, so you've got a, this is maximum 10 per year, but the pilot program is a half a year. So could we, I just want to clarify that the, the current limit that we, that, for this pilot is actually five for the pilot session, um, with a maximum of, I'm going to say seven or eight, uh, you know, dividing that? Am I understanding that correctly?
I'm not understanding what you're saying. It's just, so, uh, so I think perhaps to clarify this, the last sentence, Vice Mayor Chow, if you can change that to during the pilot, uh, during the pilot program, comma?
Oh, no.
Yeah, during the pilot program, the current, no, no, not that one, the, the next one, not, not this one. Oh, actually, probably, yeah. During, during the pilot program, okay. Right, and you already have during the pilot at the end of that first sentence, which is why I said you don't need to. But I mean, if you want to, so it's not repetitive or what. Um, so, so I, I, well, you lost me, Councilmember Morris, when you were talking about something about seven or eight. I, I, I wasn't sure what you were saying.
Okay.
Because we're talking about the fiscal year here that ends June 30th. And so it would just be an adjustment of the maximum for library field for this current fiscal year to allow for 15 uses of this field, uh, on Sundays.
Uh, I, I guess.
You know, really, more than anything, this, this is just a clerical cleanup of a, a different part of the policy. I just wanted to, you know, make sure that we're not, you know, r- running in contravention of the 10 maximum uses per, uh, per year of a field on Sundays.
Okay, so technically, half of the year is past. There's only, are, are we saying there's only five more uses or until the end of June, is my question?
Well, uh, uh, think about it this way. So Vice Mayor Chow's motion adds another five potential uses, okay? Um, for the purposes of cricket at library field between now and the end of the fiscal year. That's five on top of the 10 that can happen in any field, uh, for Sunday uses. But since this is specifically targeted to library field, this would turn it from 10 to potentially a 15 maximum of Sunday uses. So, so that's, that's all that this is geared towards.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Paul. I think a, a little bit of confusion happens because it's a pilot program for half of the year. And what we're saying with the full year policy is, I just want to make sure that, that there's no way that 10 Sunday uses can get packed into the six-month period. That's what I wanted to clarify.
No, no, that's not happening, because th- those uses have already, have already occurred. And we're also putting a maximum of one use per month under this pilot. Um, I saw Councilman Wei with a hand raised, but the hand has been lowered. And so I take it that there's no longer a request to, to deliberate here. Um, and so I know that I did ask, um, Councilmember Willie to confirm the second of these modifications. Councilmember Willie, can you confirm that second again?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, so this is set, uh, that you see on, um, the screen under amended motion. Councilmember Moore, your hand is raised again.
Uh, yes, okay, so we're, we're saying, um, the per year could be adjusted for cricket use uh, to 15 Sunday reservations for cricket. So what happens if there's volleyball? I'm a little confused.
Uh, 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 okay, Vice Mayor, if, if you could stop typing, because every time you add more language, I have to go back through the motion and the reservation. And it's not necessarily something that actually helps out. Um, so it's not 15 Sunday reservations for, for cricket use. These are 15 Sunday reservations. Okay, so, 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 yeah, delete those last three words.
But then, I'm afraid, uh, volleyball would use up the rest of the.
But your pilot program does not call out volleyball. It only calls out cricket use.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, the current limit, okay. Um, so, so, so I'll go ahead and, um, call on Director McGreeney at this point, uh, to help clarify if there are any, um, points of lack of clarification before I go and reconfirm, uh, once again with the motion, uh, with the motion or the move-in and the second or. Uh, Director McGreeney, did you want to speak to, um, to, to any of this in terms of, uh, clarifications?
Yes, I hope not to add confusion. I hate to do math on the fly. Um, however, there have only been three Sunday uses to date of library field. So.
Okay.
Per the first po- you know, per the 10 uses, you would assume that would leave seven more uses of that field, right? And so say the volleyball, um, wants to use four Sundays, um, at library field, that still does not get to the 10 with the six for cricket. If I'm doing my math right, I know it seems simple, but I could have screwed that up.
I'm sorry, you said three, four, and six, right? That, that should be 13, shouldn't it?
Well, so they've already used three, um, for this.
Cricket's already used three.
Cricket has already used three. But, but library field total has already used three for that site, for the first half of the fiscal year.
Right, but if we do this pilot program, we could, cricket could potentially have another six, right? So that would bring.
Correct.
So you're kind of contemplating additional?
No, I'm saying I think you're set with the 15. I think that you should be covered.
Oh, got it, got it, okay. So you're reaffirming what we have, uh, as text on the screen right now, is basically what I'm saying, okay? Okay, so let me go back and just confirm, and Vice Mayor Chow, please stop, you know, don't type anymore. Okay, so you accept this as your motion with all amendments made to it, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and Councilmember Willie, do you second what's on the screen here under the?
Yes.
You do, okay, good. All right, I will go, uh, to Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Moore, you have your hand raised, and, um, just to signpost this, I, I'd like to wrap this, uh, you know, briefly so that we can, uh, take a, take a.
Can we please have them motion back? Yes, just, just going through it slowly. Yes, that's, yeah, thank you. Okay, um. Okay, so we're, we are going to allow one Sunday reservation per month for cricket. One, okay, and then you, you get six, it, within the next six months for our pilot, 15 maximum. I think I can support this, okay, thank you.
Uh, yeah, thank you, thank you, Councilmember Moore. I don't see further hands raised, and so I would like to ask our city clerk to conduct a roll call vote for, uh, the motion of Vice Mayor Chow, seconded by Councilmember Willie.
Number Moore? Councilmember Wei?
I.
I did not vote. Pardon, pardon, I saw the Vice Mayor raised her hand very quickly through the mayor.
Um, okay, let's, let's reset. Vice Mayor, uh, lowered her hand, so, um, Madam City Clerk, if you could, uh, start the vote again, start the vote over again. Thank you.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Um, I'd like to say that I think this pilot is necess- necessary now, because if we don't pilot this, there is no impact from before, which is no Sunday use. Then we really don't see the impact. So that's why I thought we need to pilot in order to know how we can adjust it, so we don't have too much impact on the residents who do, do need to use Sundays. Um, do need to u- use the, the, the field at, in, on Sundays. So, yeah, aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
May I ask you a question, honestly?
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, at this point, we're going to go on to the next item on our agenda. Uh, that is. That is, uh, continued oral communications, but there are no further oral communications, we, uh, completed those uh, during that first, um, portion in our, uh, meeting. Now we have council and staff comments and future agenda items. Jim, are there any, uh, staff comments that you'd like to, uh, relay over to council and the public at this point?
Thank you, Mayor, but no, I have nothing additional to add at this point.
Okay, thank you, um, Mr. City Manager, and so we'll go on to any, uh, council comments and future agenda items at this point. And, um, I, I would like people to be adherent to, uh, about a minute each on these. And so, uh, al- also, please, uh, keep in mind that we, uh, do have a new city manager here, and we're, you know, transitioning and trying to make sure that we, uh, get the full palette of, uh, items that are on our work plan, as well as everything else teed up, uh, moving forward. And so Councilmember Moore, would you like to kick us off on this?
Sure, um, thank you, Mayor Paul, I think, uh, it's kind of a continuation from the two projects that we, uh, looked at most recently, the Beta Brothers and Canyon Crossings. I think we need to do some cleanup in our general plan, so that we don't have a repeat of that situation where, um, uh, we have a, a dispute, uh, between what is done at the staff level, and then when it comes to the city council, we feel as though, or we have our, our hands tied, that we, uh, cannot make alterations due to the Housing Accountability Act. And I, I think we need to have some, some definite cleanup there.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilmember Moore, Councilmember Willie?
I agree, so, uh, I'll leave it at that.
Okay, great, thank you, Vice Mayor Chow?
Yeah, um, I also agree, and in addition to that, we also find out the planned development has zero setback. And then there are a, a lack of standard in, in this kind of development. And we really need to use, uh, the housing element process to clean this up, because when we upzone some sites, we will be able to add setback, otherwise we would not be able to after the, the period of when we will be up, adding, upzoning the city, so we really need to get on our housing element. And I think there is just a lot of things to do, I think probably there should be a council subcommittee to really go into that, because we don't really have a lot of time left. Maybe we should have some subcommittee of co, two council members and two planning commission members to look at, uh, general planning up and, uh, and the land use strategies. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, thank you, Vice Mayor Chow, next we have Councilmember Wei.
Thank you, Mayor Paul, um, yeah, you know, especially during COVID, I do believe we, um, at least I have received quite a few emails from residents about public safety. You know, it includes burglaries, homelessness, and also back to one of the agenda items that we, I think we proposed, but put it on hold, is the safe storage of firearms, this is all under public safety, so I would really like to have a study session on public safety, you know, incorporate with sheriff's report on crime and, um, and homelessness, and also the safe storage of firearm. I do believe our residents care about public safety, and we should, um, maybe have a study session and go from there.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Wei, uh, Councilmember Moore, I thought you had your opportunity earlier, am I remembering that incorrectly?
Uh, Mayor Paul, am I allowed to, uh, agree with the Vice Mayor on, on her suggestion regarding the planned, uh, development standards? We did objective standards in case there was a ministerial project approval.
You know, please just feel free to agree, I don't want to have a discussion on this at this point.
Okay, so I, I do agree, we need to look at the planned development standards, um, for things that are not ministerial and that a subcommittee should, should be, be formed, I think that's an excellent, um, suggestion.
Okay, very well, uh, we'll, we'll bring those forward in, uh, agenda-setting discussion in the future. And so I'll go ahead and, uh, move us to, I, I don't have items to add here, so I'll, I'll go ahead and, uh, move us to, uh, the adjournment. Item number 17 is adjourning our meeting, uh, today, January 18th, 2022, in memory of a former council member and mayor of, uh, of Cupertino, named John Gatto. John served the city council, uh, well and admirably, and continued on with his public service for a number of years with the Cupertino Sanitary District, uh, where he was a sitting board member, uh, he recently passed. And so this, uh, meeting is adjourned in memory of John Gatto, a former council member and mayor of Cupertino. Thank you very much, everyone, uh, have a good night, and we'll see you on February 1st.